Okay, there any commendations?
I had one for tonight. I would like to commend Mary Maxfield, the Browns' principal, who spearheaded the efforts to bring Lynn Lyons, our district, she was here last week and imagine it's part of John's update. We certainly want to thank the Friends of the Marblehead Public Schools and the PTOs and PCOS for funding that, but I think Mary deserves some special recognition for all the work she did to put that idea into motion. It was a great parent presentation and I've heard great feedback about the PD, so thank you.
I'd like to commend our SRO Sean Smee. I just want to recognize that our work that he does has been a lot of situations this year, especially that he's really been professional on top of it, communicative. And we have things we need to do to help keep our students and staff safe. So I just want to take a moment to thank him personally and candidly for the great work that he does for us here in Swam. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. If anybody online or virtually wants to say something during public comment, please raise your hand. All right, we'll move on to student representation. Well, we have for us tonight.
Uh, thank you. Quarter one ends next Thursday, and so students and staff are working hard to make sure grades are up to date before the quarter ends. Fall sports regular seasons are wrapping up this week with most teams having playoffs beginning next week. Football is its final regular season game tomorrow at home where they'll be playing Danvers. And Powderpuff has begun practicing for the girls. I believe today they're inside in the fieldhouse, but they're now outside four times a week down at Getchels practicing. So we're wishing them on for their game later in November against Swampscow. And many seniors have been working hard to achieve their post-secondary goals with some admissions deadlines looming, particularly this Saturday, November first. The school counseling department's done a lot to make that transition super smooth for many. So thank you to them. I would just like to end by wishing all students and faculty a happy and safe Halloween tomorrow.
Thank you, Mo. Okay, we'll go on to the district updates. Superintendent Love, hello.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. November is a busy month. We have parent teacher conferences on November 5th and 12th, full day of PD on November 10th. Weekend Day is November 11th, and we will head into Thanksgiving week. December will be here before we know it. There have been some great events recently. We had our day of service for the high school students, which is great, community involved day. I was able to witness the National Honor Society induction this week. Congrats to you, same on. And I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounced Catherine Andriano, Tessa Andriano, Finn Bowen, Ian Eland, Ruker, Tessa Francis, Sasha Anizar, Emil Gil Duran, Brian Lynn Golden, Avery Prune, Joy Mishulam, Jack Molinari, actually Mortensen, Isabel Mortensen, Chloe Rowland, Haley Schmidt, Thomas Spencer, and Luna Bellandry. It's great. It was a nice ceremony here at high school. The Monster Mash last week at Brown is a fan favorite. The Indian Mark Village was great yesterday. Students and staff are so creative in the way they express their opinions. Just to share a few, I'm all ears, thrown under the bus, angel in disguise, butter fingers, some on my face. It's just really, really cute. Walk around the track while the kids dress up and a lot of the staff dressed up, so that's really cool. We had Lynn Lyons, thanks to Mary Maxwell and the PTO, come and speak to staff and then the parents and caregivers. Presentations will focus mainly on strategies to address anxiety. Discussions were engaging, timely, and meaningful. Believe she's returning in January for part two of her Marblehead tour. We also heard from, what's the one thing from Inner? Lower Backhush from Inner Explorer. I share mindfulness strategies and resources with staff. The program has been generously donated and funded by the Rotary, which has been great in staff on person to great. Strategies in our classrooms and in general for our wellbeing. We went to the Rotary and saw a presentation, gosh, she did some for staff the other day. And you know, it's a great program and just speaks to how we can manage our anxiety, I mean, our mindfulness and our worry and our anxiety. Really, really good stuff. I sent out messaging related to the potential for the staff benefits to be affected. The resources and information was crafted by our counselor Caitlin LeBaron in concert with counseling staff. So I just want to make sure that I give credit where credit is due to that. A community staff and PTOs, PCOS are definitely rallying, which is so great to see in our community. The digital backpack we have created is a great resource for our community. It's been, it can be accessed on our website and is linked in our principals newsletters. One item of note that was added is the wait until eighth information. This is a push for parents to consider waiting until eighth grade before providing students with self-ones. I share this information in case parents are interested in, it's not necessarily a school sponsored event, but I get things, good information and I think it's great for folks to check that resource out. It was my honor to speak at Dollars for Scholars Annual Meeting last week or the week before. Losing track now. They provided upwards of $4 million in scholarships for our students over almost four decades. Thanks to Holly Anzlet for her efforts and for the invitation to speak. They are seeking some board members, and if you're willing and able to assist, it is a great cause, provides direct and positive impact for our students. I was also asked to remind folks that students are eligible to reapply for the scholarship in each year of college, which is something more students should avail themselves of, because a lot of times they apply for the initial scholarship, then either don't realize they're applying or they forget to, you aren't there in college. I'm thinking of it, but I was asked to remind folks that. And now for our messages of positivity and recognition of staff. From Scott Williams, village school principal. Scott says, I would like to recognize Chuck McKeever for his service as an outstanding head custodian at Village. Chuck goes above and beyond every day and night to keep our building spotless and safe. No job is too big or too small for Chuck, always with a smile, never with any complaints. Village shines brightly because of his hard work and commitment to making sure everything is in order, not just with our cleanliness, but with our safety too. We're lucky to have such a wonderful custodian at Village. Thank you, Mr. McKeever. From Matt Lavangi, Vets Middle School Principal. Megan Kaplan is a tremendous asset to the entire NVS, NVNS community. As our school nurse at Vets, she goes above and beyond every day to support students and staff alike. Megan is always willing to lend a hand to anyone in need, bringing kindness, compassion, professionalism to everything she does. Her caring nature and consistently positive attitude make her an invaluable member of our team and a true source of comfort and encouragement for our students. He also wants to shout out to Tracy DePaula, who is our cafeteria manager at Vets. She has a tremendous attitude, is willing to help out wherever she can. Karen takes the time to connect with students, making them feel welcome and valued each day. With her warm smile and caring nature, she helps to help the lunchroom, helps make the lunchroom a place where every student feels included and appreciated. From Frank Kowalski, the daughter's school principal. Shouts out to Sally Chevry, Alyssa Daggett, Gary King, and Kristen Zarros. The positive attitudes and the ability to not only connect with children, but also to meet adults have been inspiring. It's been evident in Glover's MCAS data from 2025. The leadership shown in and out of the classroom and the support given to your teams are big reasons why Glover's students are doing so well. Further, the ability to work collegially with administration has allowed a special partnership to form. It takes the village, but when adults take responsibility as seriously as these four do, everyone wins. From Michelle Carlson, the high school principal. Thank you all. Thank you to all of the faculty and staff at MHS who helped make last Wednesday's day such a success. This was truly an all hands on deck day at MHS. Our teachers and instructional assistants stepped up in so many ways. Chapel only over 200 freshmen who took part in the day of service across our community. Proctoring the MPSATs for 357 sophomores and juniors and working closely with our seniors on their college essays and resumes. As a great example of teamwork dedication to our students. Thank you to everyone who made the day run smoothly and meaningful for all of our students. From Mike Perfling, our assistant superintendent of finance operations. Carleen Salmon and Kristen Marillo are working diligently to get the Munis payroll set up. The process includes setting up multiple payroll tables, linking those tables to every employee and running simulations. They're currently running simultaneous payrolls of both soft write and Munis to identify any potential errors. This involves step, this involves step will highly reduce likelihood that there are any errors when Munis payroll goes live on 1/1/26. In addition, they are responsible for making employee changes, new hires, destinations, name and address deduction changes. And then two systems, they are also working on training materials for our staff on how to enter time in Munis and for our supervisors on how to improve time sheets. The materials will be available both written and video format. They'll be presented in both English and Spanish. They are currently scheduling an all-staff webinar and all-staff webinar in November for staff to receive information on a new timekeeping process. The webinar will be recorded, posted for those who cannot attend. Kristen and Carleen continue to do this while providing an exceptional level of customer service to our MPS staff. Lisa Maria Belido, our assistant superintendent of student services. Lisa Marie says, I would like to recognize Gina Semble, our teacher at Village for outstanding collaboration with Special Education Department in creating adaptive art display, which is cool by the way. This initiative beautifully showcased the student artwork in a prominent display in case at Village celebrating creativity and inclusion. Efforts like these foster an environment where all students feel seen, valued, and included. And last but not least, from Julia Ferrera, assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. Thank you to the dedicated members of MPS Professional Development Committee for their valuable contributions and thoughtful recommendations to guide district-wide professional development. The PD committee members are Natalie Gley, Rebecca Brand, Shelley Burns, Connie Callahan, Ally Carey, Laura Dartley Rocco, Katrina Donovan, P D Freegun, Andy Graziano, Jay Guttiaro, Mary LeBlanc, Daniel Moser, and Emily Perez. Thank you to our school and district leaders who also regularly join our PD committee meetings to ensure there's ongoing collaboration in our PD planning. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a happy, safe, Halloween. Thank you so much. That's my update tonight as chair.
Thank you. The next item is district financial items.
Thank you. Good evening. So this report was actually created about a month ago, and I will have another update for you at our next school committee meeting. I try to run them at the end of the month so that it's kind of just gives us a benchmark every month to see where we're advancing. So when I did this, it was the end of September. At that time, we had just finished our second payroll for our 10-month staff. It went, well, it was going to be in soft write, went smoothly. Giving up the on salaries, because we are running in two different systems right now. Payroll is being run out of soft write and our general ledger expenses or non-salary expenses being done through Munis. So when we get to Munis, we'll be able to automatically encumber salaries. The system will do it for us and we'll know how many pay periods people are on. When they're starting and dates are, when they're paid, they're going to get paid in. And it will automatically encumber salaries for us. Currently, the only way in software to encumber salaries is to do a manual purchase order process. So I have encumbered salaries. I did four POs. I did one for September, one for October, one for November, one for December, five POs. And then I did one from January to June just to get us into the Munis. Once we're in Munis, I can delete all those POs. So the only things that I haven't encumbered from a salary standpoint right now are the lead teacher stipends, the custodial overtime, which that's kind of one of those things that's not consistent every week. Unemployment costs, which vary depending on when people want unemployment, come off unemployment. The contractual lane changes at the time that we're down on the encumbering, there were still lane changes trickling in. So the ones that came in late, later than September 1st, they're not encumbered. Obviously, they're being paid, it's just not encumbered. Athletic salaries, primarily bus drivers for athletic events. The medical salaries or the team trainer. The custodial salaries for, you know, district events that are held onsite and police duties. In addition, I did not encumber lunch and recess salaries. It's pretty minimal. It's just that some of those positions weren't yet filled at the time of encumbrance. And the last thing I did not encumber yet was the 403D match. And that's, most of these here will not be encumbered in Munis either, just because they're not a set consistent number week after week or five weeks after five weeks. Just so you know, when you're looking through the reports, special education out of district expenditures are currently just under $700,000 over budget. That includes expenditures and encumbrances. I will caution that this is due to all the tuition at that time being charged off to the local budget. We had not set up circuit breaker accounts in Munis at that time, so they couldn't charge off to the Munis. That has been rectified as of this week, so next week you will see that. So I'm just saying, we're moving $1.7 million of expenses out of a local budget into circuit breaker. And obviously that would put about a million dollars back in special educations. Put special education deposit by a million again. I'm not sure how much more we need to encumber in that line, but that million dollars is basically what we spent prepaid last year. So it was short of a million dollar positive because we prepaid a million dollars in salaries, so we should be just about washed out on that. What else do I have? Just, we'll continue to monitor all the budget lines monthly. What I like to do when I run a monthly report, it gives us some gauges. If something's way over and it consistently stays way over, we know that something we need to watch. Or if something is right on budget and then all of a sudden jumps up or down, we have an issue somewhere. So it gives me a benchmark on each line to be able to identify where we might have a problem coming up. And just still when we get into February, March, April, we may get to look at lines a little closer and say, hey, look, you know, we need to cut back spending here. We need to freeze the budget. We did not do that last year. Right now, I don't anticipate we need to do that, but we'll keep an eye on it. So you know, I think I mentioned this quite frequently, but you know, our biggest, our biggest expenses are salaries. Certainly, it's about 76% of our budget is salaries. Special education out of district, two we've been in, transportation and utilities. The other thing I have in there is legal expenses, but those were last year, hopefully this year, then not that much. So I did attach the budget report. I don't know if anybody had any opportunity to review it, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I did have. At this time in September, we were carrying unexpended, unencumbered, meaning non-committed balance of about $2.8 million. Consider a million of that is prepaid tuition, so we're really probably not threatening about a million, I meant 1.7.
What are the kind of high-level buckets to make that up? Supplies and whatnot? I would think things just haven't.
Yeah, so I think, I think we've done a pretty good job in covering utilities. I think last year was one of the areas that we did not cover early on in the year. So I think we've covered utilities pretty well. Again, a million of that is because of the circuit breaker. Yeah, and so it's going to be supplies, it's going to be maintenance. We have a decent maintenance account, but it's one of those things that you don't plan. Maintenance, you don't plan for boiler to go down, you don't plan for, you know, certain things. We don't order all of our custodial supplies at the beginning of the year. Store them all, so that's, you know, cleaning supplies, personal hygiene products for the restrooms and things like that. So there's a lot of things, but you know, and also schools, there are certain materials the schools do not order until later in the year. Partially because of shelf life, partially because of the high school, the biology is not going to order their specimens in September when they're going to be working on them in April, May. So there are some things that just certainly don't get, don't get committed. And then there's some things that, you know, people just, you know, forget to encumber. I think the high schools have done a really good job, like they try and encumber the graduation expenses, feeling that that's going to happen in June, just to commit the funds to make sure that we've got them available. So there's a wide variety, but I'll try and look at the report next week and try and see where the, where the big buckets of unexpended funds are to try and identify maybe if there's something that we're missing that we haven't encountered yet. I'll report that on that next speaker. Next meeting, next week.
Well, you corrected my wrong. I don't know, say 1.8. You listed all these things on the first page. Those will go into there, is that? Like, they just, that will all go into that?
Yeah, I think the teacher stipends is probably under $100,000 custodial overtime for athletics and then just custodial overtime in general. Probably under $25,000. And there's not, none of those are big buckets. If they were big buckets, I probably wouldn't have covered them just to get them reading on the notebooks. There are certain ways, I do mine. Partially because we're running two systems right now. Salaries all come out of soft write and expenditures all come out of non-salary expenditures all come out of Munis. I combine everything into one spreadsheet. Because that's in one spreadsheet, I can certainly manually encumber in the spreadsheet. I can say, okay, no, we're going to spend the $25,000 custodial services. So I'm just going to, I'm going to fill that in, into the math of yourself. Do it, do it for the cell. I did a little bit of that last year with like, I don't think we even got there. There were a handful of things I had, I had a sticky note on my desk and every month I had to show them. Welcome soon as we want to.
And then you said you had a couple of things you wanted me, including legal services, but last year was in anomaly. So I see two line items here. One is for special education and the other is for, yeah, but I have a school committee, but it's, you know, central administration. Legal services, it all seemed to be, you know, well within the amount of budget and so. Is there something there you anticipate or?
So, so looking at the central admin legal under school committee, the budget's $117,000. So this, this is a September report. I know we usually get our invoices from our primary attorney at the end of the month, so this would probably do not come in September. So this was really just a line of August. And in that time period, we had expended $32,000 in two months. So I would assume that we probably at least on case, and I don't believe that we have a signed unit A contract for this year yet, so assuming that's still in draft or, well, I'm not sure how far along the process is.
Is that still, that's still?
Yeah, so I know there's some outstanding work turns right now, so. The special education one, so previously before I got here, the legal lines all in one line. Children believe it shouldn't be three. I think the school committee should have a legal line that's for negotiations and whatnot. The superintendent should have a legal line that's for doing investigations or, or, you know, quick calls to the attorney to get advice. And then certain special education needs are all aligned for just the buckets, just to make sure that we know where. I got it broken down into two. Maybe next year I'll get down to three, but I got it down to two this year. I think just trying to identify how much the superintendent, how much of that $117,000 should be for the superintendent? How much should be for the school committee? It's hard to determine looking at last year's bills because there was just so much going on.
Great questions. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the MCAS analysis presentation. Julie, you started, starting off. Thank you.
So Julie is going to kick us off the MCAS presentation that you've joined by the principals as we go through each school. To talk about specific schools and their data. I think we changed up the presentation a little bit from last year based upon the feedback from this committee and also just sharing some data that is more critical and pertinent to what we, what we really need to see. And I will just say overarching, I know Julie and folks are probably going to talk about it, but I think there's a lot of conversation about, you know, how we look at this data, it's school by school, grade by grade, and do the work that we need to do to make sure the kids are getting what they need in the classrooms and how do we make sure we have a resource. So that's all part and parcel of this. And the other thing I'll say is, you know, we always have to remember that MCAS is a data point, one data point. And I won't believe a point about, you know, the graduation requirement on the 10th grade, but that up in discussion, but just keep that online as we move through. But Julie, if you want to take over on the presentation.
Yeah, baby. I'm Julia Ferrer, assistant superintendent of general reading. I'm Hapos Sarrazin Robideau, assistant superintendent of Julio, and I'm our principal of schools principals. We want to thank the school committee for the opportunity to present our MCAS data to you this evening. A top priority of ours is the focus and the focus of our work every day that we do is our students. So tonight's presentation will begin with a focus on our students. Then we'll look at the district's data as a larger scale. And then we're going to go to each school level to look at the data presented by our principals. So we'll begin in the focus on students, taking a look at the student report. This report is sent to students and families from Desi, and I've provided copies for the school committee members here. And there's some in the back by Sally. On top, you have the MCAS student report for grades three through eight. The next copy is for high school students, a sample of what they would get, and then just some additional resources. So starting with the student focus is important for us because we want to make sure that that is the center of the conversation because all of our work is centered around students each and every day. So on the first slide here, you're going to see this is excerpts from the student report. So just screenshots in those, in the audience, I do have the last slide of the presentation as a QR code. So if you want the slides, I have a QR code for you at the end of the presentation. So looking at this, this is from the student report. And Desi outlines here about the report, right? That it provides students results, and this is something that we encourage our families, we send the report home to families. We encourage them to look at with the students so they know how they did. They put the time and effort into the assessment. We want them to look at how they did on that and have those conversations. Again, focus around students' academic progress and growth. The next slide is another section from the front page of the report. And really here, what we're looking at in the focus, I just want to highlight, this is one of many assessment reports that we do share with families, especially K to eight. So the following pages in the student report provides our families information about their students' academic progress and their growth. And again, it does highlight, I did not add the exclamation point in the blue triangle. That's from Desi, who also emphasized this, how important it is that they are used for educational purposes. But yet that it's just not the only, it should be encompassed with other assessments such as school tests, classroom, when possible. And here are amazing students doing some work. Again, from the student report, again, front page, and I think this is important because this is where Desi places their emphasis, right? How do we use MCAS? And it's used for fall, for many purposes. One, we want our families, it's really good communication with families to see how their children are making progress. We use it as educators very, very frequently, especially in our data meetings to assess our students' learning and where we need to continue to improve our instruction. In the bottom left, this is a recent photo from a data team meeting. So they're looking at the data and in this particular meeting, it was not MCAS. It was our dibbles, our in-class dibbles reading data. So just want to highlight, this is a practice that we do. We don't just look at MCAS data and we're done. This is an ongoing regular practice for our educators and our instructional leaders. And then finally, I just want to highlight the last bullet point here. Even though it's no longer a part, MCAS is not part of the competency determination to earn a diploma in Massachusetts, students are still eligible if they score in that top tier percent to percent to be eligible for state scholarships. So there is definitely still some importance for students to do well. In the next section, you don't have any numbers, but I just want to share, there's really two important points that Desi highlights that we're going to be talking about as well. So we're going to mirror the conversation that Desi started with the student report. We're going to look at the achievement level and their growth. We feel like those are really two important factors when talking about student success. And I know this committee has asked before, how do we measure student achievement? And it really is through that achievement level and growth, but MCAS isn't the only data point that we look at for that. So if you were the parent and you received this, this would all be filled in with all the data and all the scores. And as you can see in the sample that I gave you, there's a lot more information breaks down by question and how they're doing over time. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was familiar with this, not knowing if everybody does receive the family reports based off of what grade level. Because these are going home to only our families who had last year, grade three through eight, and then nine to 10. As we talk about achievement level descriptors, I think it's good to know the meaning of it, obviously with C, meaning partial meaning and not. And that is based off of the current grade level standards. So I'm going to, I'm going to focus on the slide just for a second. And from the school committee, this other packet is also a resource. This doesn't go home to families, but they do, Desi does provide it as one of the linked resources from the student report. And what it's talking about here is our student growth percentiles. We call it SGP. So when we talk about SGP, really, we're looking at how our students are doing in comparison with their peers and the growth over time. So growth is an additional statistic to consider when we're looking at the MCAS achievement levels. It gives us a better picture of student knowledge and learning. MCAS achievement levels and scaled scores tell us how well a student has mastered grade level standards. And the SGP, the student growth percentile, provides a measure of how much a student learned from one year to the next compared to the other students with similar MCAS achievement levels. So we, there's a growth level range, and I'll reference these throughout the presentation. So if they're growing, their SGP is one to 20 points, that's very low growth, and so forth throughout the the chart there. So for example, if a student has an SGP of 58, they scored the same or higher than 58% of their academic tiers. And because this is a comparison between students with similar starting scores, SGP can also be interpreted as how much the student threw. A difference of fewer than 10 points between years should not be considered meaningful. For example, if a school had its average SGP of fifty-two in twenty-twenty-two and a fifty-four and twenty-three. We would not say that they had a greater average of growth, we'd say that they maintained that average growth, so they're still that same category. Any questions?
Are we measuring growth in our burn readers, we're taking the first term, or is that not something that we're able?
It's not there, um, but we are tracking, and I'll show some slides of how we will be tracking, not only the, like, against themselves, but also the SGP as in. All right, so, as promised, um, from going from the students, we're gonna take a, a step back to the district data. Um, so looking district-wide, uh, we are gonna focus on the, uh, the core assessments through MCAS, and the first is ELA, English and Language Arts. Um, so the chart here explains, outlines, uh, basically how we did our previous year with the darker, the shaded gray and the teal green.
Two.
Yes, um, is how we performed this year in our meeting and exceeding category. Um, so you can see the overall district and then broken down, um, the state and through each school. Um, what you'll notice is the district doesn't incorporate all students, even students who are in kind of district placements. Um, and we, um, wanna just note that now, so if you look at the Dussie website, it will have district data. We have a, a platform called Open Architects that allows us to get really great specific data by school, by student, by grade, so. We're able to drill down a little bit more with our data, um, so that's what we wanted to share tonight. So, looking further into our ELA results, district-wide, we have here, um, we, um. Overall, so Marblehead is in the fifty, we need fifty-one SGP, which puts us in the moderate growth range. Uh, and you can see that's where we land also with some comparable districts. These are not our DART districts, and that's purposeful, many years ago, uh, and I'm not sure the history of all of it, but many years ago, we selected these districts. To compare ourselves to, um, beyond the DART district. Partially because a lot of them are local, we like to also look at how our national returns doing, and you'll see Beverly and Swamp Scott on here. In Lentio, um, so I just wanna, I know that question has come up before about our DART districts, which is the district analysis and review, review tool that Dussie provides. Um. While we're open to looking at, we look at DART and we're open to maybe changing our districts that we've selected, those were selected, uh, many years ago. Um, and they're populated into our open architects already for us.
And I just, can I just ask, like, some of our dark features really don't make sense, for whatever reason they do, that's even don't make sense, like, for instance, like. I can cable on our dark, it's such a very, you know, definitely. Perfect comparison, we might be more of ours too, so it's like, not really apples and apples, it's supposed to kinda come hot, so we kinda look at this as some, you know, more, um. Reasonable.
Thank you, Josh, um, and I think this tells an important story that, you know, Marblehead is doing really well, um, in terms of growth, and this is, you know. Testament to the work, um, that we're putting in year after year with our. Our staff, so you can see we are right there, um, in comparison to our other, um, districts that we've selected. The math for meeting and exceeding, um, again, the previous year is in that grade, and then the meeting exceeding currently is in the color with the numbers. You can see we're above the state average, and then both, probably the most, both ELA and math at the high school, um, there was a dip, and that will certainly be addressed by. As well, she's presenting as well. And again, we are right there, um, in terms of moderate growth, um, along with. Districts. Fine, we don't have a.
Winchester.
Oh, it's on the left side, what was it? So you can, on the bottom, on the left, it has.
Oh, I see, yes, she didn't include it.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, but I'll double check that again. Yes.
But you can see where we are compared.
No. Uh, okay, um, for science meeting exceeding, our students take the signs of the ST, um, MCAS assessment, um. And, and within the grade spans, right, so they don't take it in their grade, uh, they take it in. Eighth. Ninth. No, I think it was one, right, yes, okay. But am I right here, guys? Yes.
Right.
No, I missed that, that's why I knew I was missing my fifth, eighth and ninth, thank you, okay. Um, so we don't have an SGP for science because, um, it's not taken each year. And you can see overall as a district, fifty-seven percent, um, we scored above our state, um, and the, but the fifty-three, forty-three, excuse me. Um, and then you can see how our students did, uh, again, the ninth, the eighth, and the fifth. So. In March of twenty twenty-four, um, we were asked, um, by, um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. To create what's called a Student Opportunities Act plan, um, so through Student Opportunities Act, schools, towns receive funding. Um, and we had to write a plan, it had to go through the school committee, and it had to be approved by school committee, and then approved by Dussie. Um, of how we would allocate funds through chapter seven of the Student Opportunities Act. We, as a district at that time, this is March of twenty twenty-four, we, um, decided that an area focus will be for us on increasing the academic achievement. Of our English learners and our students with disabilities while supporting their social movement will be. So, for the next couple slides, I'm gonna highlight, um, how our English learners are doing and performing on MCAS. And then, uh, students with disabilities, um, so for this slide in particular, we had thirty-six English learners. Take MCAS in the spring of twenty twenty-five, and what we're lucky that here is that their, um, SGP indicates. A low to high growth, and it was a range depending on the grade level, you can, you can see that represented on the chart on the left. And in math. Again, a low to high growth depending on grade level. And certainly. Areas to celebrate, especially in our sixth grade and tenth grade, we saw some really, really fantastic growth. So, August to celebrate, and I wanna make sure we're. Doing that, but there's also work that we're gonna continue to look at. Lisa Marie, thank you.
Welcome. Hello, everyone. Um, so this slide focuses on the special education students' performance in English Language Arts, uh, on the twenty-five. Spring twenty-five MCAS, we're looking as, um, since Lieutenant Ferrer is saying, uh, the growth. And also, um, student achievement trends over time. On the left side of the chart, um, we can see student growth, which is the SGP by grade. And when looking at the chart, same pattern as the charts before, the gray, light gray bar underneath is the state, um, SGP. And then our district SGP is, um. Highlighted over that in the teal color. So what stands out here is grades five and eight stand out having, uh, what they consider high growth is a sixty-one and a sixty-four respectively. Which is, uh, a relatively average. Uh, grades four and ten show low growth with SGP of thirty-six and forty, and that's just. Under, like, forty is the cutoff for, uh, average. Um, and so, what we do here is we would look at targeted interventions, uh, occurring for our special education students. Um, what's working in five and eight, maybe we need to bend that more in, uh, four and ten. And then grades six, seven are in the moderate range with forty-two and forty-five, uh, as their SGP. This tells us that some grades are making strong progress and other grades just need that additional support. On the right side, those are the performance levels over time, um, the achievement trends from twenty-two to twenty-five. The percentage of students not meeting expectations has increased from twenty-one to twenty-nine percent, um. And our partially meeting is basically has stayed pretty stagnant, showing a little bit of movement between fifty and fifty-six percent. Um, and our meeting expectations has declined slightly. Um, and mind you, this is the subgroup of our special education students, so that means even though some grades are showing strong growth. Uh, our overall achievement. We need to look at that a little bit more to, to see that trend, um, moving, uh, to the higher performance categories. Um, some of the key takeaways in, in looking, um, like digging into the data, like this is great data, um. But behind it, um, and I'm sure we'll get into this at another time, we could talk about absenteeism is a huge impact when looking at the numbers. Particularly for, um, our, uh, high need students overall, um. And so, you know, that's just, uh, uh, another area for us to be located.
Is there any, is all students, I think, say.
Yes. Yes, exactly, just as the entire. Exactly. Yes, and so. The next slide, that's perfect, thank you, I'm trying to look at all the same places, um. The next slide is very similar, you know, this slide was, uh, represents special education students in the area of math. For the spring twenty-five MCAS, um, and on the left side, um, we see student growth. Um, the SGP for math, grades four and ten are showing low growth, again, right on the cusp of forty and forty-one. Um, you also notice that those are, um, tend to be what I like to call transition years. So third grade into fourth grade, academically, particularly in math, is, is a big jump. Um, and then tenth grade, that's where the growth kind of divides, right, kids go into their own. Acts and terms of the type of math that they're taking. Um, grades five and six are near average with fifty, uh, and forty-nine as their SGP. And grade seven stands out with high growth at fifty-six. Um, and grade eight is just slightly, again. You know. In the, in the average region of forty-seven. Um, so the growth is, is a little uneven, but I think that the work the district is doing and has done over the last several years around. Calorie in the curriculum and curriculum mapping that's being done, um, I think, you know, we're, we're seeing. Some positive trends. On the right side, the performance levels over time, um. Everything pretty much stays in the same range over those four years, uh, the not, uh, meeting expectations. Is higher than I'd like, to be honest, um, between twenty-five and twenty-nine percent, um, and the partially meeting. Uh, is fifty-three to fifty-six percent, and it's showing slight, some slight trends, um, upward. Um, and honestly. Would love to see our students in the exceeding expectations roles, but currently, we are at. In some, uh, years, one to three percent, um, but typically students wouldn't necessarily require an IP on. They're exceeded the standards, kind of, that are intuitive. And so, um, some takeaways and things that are already occurring in the district along with working, the Office of Teaching and Learning. Um, is, uh, actually we met today, my assistant director, Victoria Ryan, myself and Angela Graziano. We're looking at our programming within district, what can we do to, um, solidify the work in tier three level? What are the curriculum tools, what are the assessments we're using, how can we calibrate that across, uh, grades vertically? Um, so, we're really excited about that work, um, and we hope to, you know, see the impact of the work with our.
Thank you so much, Miss.
Thank you.
The next three slides, um, we're gonna demonstrate here is growth over time for a cohort is a way to paint a picture of how we follow our students over time. And the next three slides are gonna focus on those cohorts, um. One cohort being a group that just completed high school, so that's the high school MCAS assessment, so grades three through ten. The next slide will be middle school and then elementary school, so I think this is important to show that we don't just look at how each student is doing each, um. How grade is doing each year, um, alone, and that we do look at them and we follow that throughout, so. Thankful to our instructional coach, Lisa Marie, just mentioned Angie, Angie's really helpful with tracking this data for us. Um, and so the top category is meet and exceed, and then it's broken down from there, but looking at the meeting exceeding. Uh, we can see that our students aren't demonstrating growth, um. We are gonna talk more about the tenth grade. You know, there was some, there was a dip, so we'll talk about that, but looking at how they are growing over time is definitely something. That we wanted to, uh, to highlight here. And again. While we might have some shifts up and down, it does really, you know. Near the state, but always above the state average, so this is our high school, students are now our current juniors, they just finished their MCAS assessments. There. These are, this next slide is as students, um, are current ninth graders, so through. Elementary and middle school, and how they've done, and of course, again, when they've dipped, the state has stepped to where we've consistently grown. And I do wanna highlight, um, how well we have done on our MCAS, which I know our middle school principal will be talking about. But there's definitely some really positive spots to celebrate. If I, I'm not celebrating, I'm waiting, the principals have some really great celebrations, I'm trying not to, to take everything, they have some great celebrations that look forward to sharing. But just wanna make sure, presenting the, the data here, and then these are students who, uh, are seventh graders, so they, you know, the third grader or sixth grader. Um, you know, like. Definitely some points to look at, and we're gonna be taking a look, especially, um, at the ESI there as well. Are there any questions, since we're gonna go into now the school level, uh, any questions that? We can help answer so far. Great, I'd like to introduce Dr. Michelle Carlson, our Marblehead High School principal, who's going to share, uh.
Thank you, um, thanks for having me here tonight, um, so I'm here to talk a little bit about the MCAS results in the high school. Um, I first wanna say we have wonderful, talented students at Marblehead High School who perform very well academically. Unfortunately, um, as you know, last year, the state did make a change that no longer requires the MCAS as graduation requirement. Um, we have noticed that many students have not taken the assessment as seriously as previous years, when it was a high stakes test. Um. And we had hoped that they, they would take it more seriously, but noticed that they, um. Spent a lot less time taking the exam last year as compared to previous years. Um, we also faced challenges with student attendance during the testing period, uh, and during the school year last year. For various reasons, um, and we had, they was really for the first time ever attempting to opt students out, and so they're not coming, they're not taking it. So, um. For those reasons, I don't believe that the results that we are going to show, we were pretty impressed, or we are going to accurate representation of our students' components. Um, or the capabilities. So, um, as the state noted in the reports to the families, um, the data should be used alongside other measures of student achievement. Um, so to that end, we are also examining additional data sources to look at how our students are doing. Including their AP test scores, we do have some tenth graders that took the MCAS last year, as tenth graders that also worked in some AP classes. Were able to compare that data, and we'll look this year as well at the AP data if that comes out. Um, and once the PSAT results are, um, released this year, we'll be able to use that data and compare their growth. From tenth to eleventh grade alongside the, the MCAS and see how it, how it correlates. So, um, let's see. I'll make this all, okay, so here is our ELA category, and you can see, um, we, we. At the point, our purpose on down, we are still above the state average. But this is what I'm talking about, what we're seeing, how the, the students are performing as well as the acceptance to do. Um, and you can see in the, the side how it breaks out, um, for language and setting writing. It's still about the state average. This is math, uh, it's pretty much the same curve that we just saw, um. We are still above the state average, this as well, um, the one, you wanna switch this to. The one difference with the science, this is three to nine times, where math and English are grade ten. We are still seeing that the students took this more seriously as those high graders, and. Um, we're, we're pretty consistent from last year to this year, and well, well about the state average here. Um, the one thing I've known is pollution, um, that are a little category here. Well, this is the student growth percentage data, and as we would expect, because we saw that dip, we're not seeing a growth percentage that we. Would like to see with the students. Um, and so here, here's our slide, so, you know, ELA, math, science, um. We are continuing to perform above the state average in all of those subjects. We are continuing to perform above the state in all of those subject areas. We have um much fewer students, and this is where it's a good thing to be below the state, um, not meeting expectations. So we are well under the state for not meeting expectations in all pretty subject areas. In math, um, we are in the top third of high schools, and in science, we're in the top twenty percent of high school steering message. Um, so, what were the next steps and how do we, how do we focus on growing? So, um, yesterday during our PLC time. Our English, math, and science departments met, uh, they began a detailed review of the end past results that included individual test questions and item analysis. So that they could identify specific areas for improvement and and target and focus on those areas with students. Uh, this analysis will continue throughout the school year. Um, we're placing a strong emphasis emphasis on improving student attendance. I spoke with families about this, starting at our bachelor night this year, because we got the trends last year. Uh, we will continue asking families to partner with us and ensure the students are present and engaged every day at school. That's really important for students to to be in school so that they can get the instruction from wealth. It's also important to note that M pass um remains a required state assessment while not a graduation requirement. There is no opt out option, so we do need students to come in and take that test. Um, we are continuing to update our spoken sequence this year with our curriculum across all departments to ensure alignment with state standards and assessment expectations. Um, dedicated professional developmental time this year is being used for this work. Well, and this is an ongoing since the beginning of school, but we have started this and are continuing throughout the school year. And then for our MTS framework, we've also enhanced the curriculum in our RTI classes in uh ELA, math, and science. To better support students who need to be a little help.
I, so I, I don't see a corresponding dip in the state average. So, do you know why that, and do you have, um, are there comparable schools that are in our our list where we base on it as well that?
Yeah, so I did analysis of the NEC, because that's some of the principal streets that I'll they work with, so that would be.
What is NEC?
NEC would be. So it's, it's that's where going on in Eastern, in Massachusetts, so it's Masonic, um, Danvers. Beverly, Kennedy, Swanson, um, roster. Um, but what I can tell you is that for ELA, um, the only school that was higher than us was Masonic. Um, and the same for math, uh, we were, we were the second in the world to see for that, and uh for science, we were, we were. Then one, we were the top. So, um, in looking at their states compared to ours, they're all dipped.
Okay, yeah, I I I was asking because of, you know, solutions to try to sort combat that now.
I think comparing to the state, state average.
Well.
So I don't even look at state, I think I think we should be looking at.
I was just looking at like, like the trend, you know?
Yeah.
I think, I think the point can be driven whole enough. I mean, we have state averages. But, but I would say the 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 run through this is that last year. Um, and the force really wants to answer, I I I gotta show guys what I like this, if they kind of like this. Um, but I think that attendance piece actually drives most of that.
Attendance affected.
Because if they're not in school, they don't, they can't.
So it's attendance not for the test. So if you're not taking the test, when I think it's, the scores are based on the students who turn the test.
Correct. It does affect our.
So I don't know what that does not, what does that have to do with these numbers? Are they, is that big to those?
So it's both, it's both. So when, when, when students were our absentee, we raised very high last year, especially at the high school, and. The um test doesn't count for graduation, so between those two things, um, scores did because they weren't here to get the instruction. Came and took the test, the guy started Michelle, like someone took the whole entire test like ten fifteen minutes. And that's like, clearly not putting in the effort, and that was a lot. And then there was comparison, we said, well, these kids took AP courses and did fabulously. And maintain that. And Michelle's point is, you know, kids are capable, um, they have, they have the wherewithal to do well, and their academics would be just. See, that's where you're selling it. It's a huge, but that's one of the strategies, it's not the one strategy, that's one of the strategies. And then the other data, the areas where she pointed out where they're a little bit lower, you know, um, we always look at that and say, this goes out, say, what are their? What areas are all students doing, and how do we, you know, why don't we look at how the questions are formulated, look at, you know, how do we address that in the classroom? So, there's a lot of pieces of puzzle, but yeah, I I I agree, we we all look at that. Wow, you know, that's that's crazy, but the only thing we can point to specifically is that attendance.
Our chronic absence is very, very high last year and actually has continued this year. So, um, really, uh, maybe pushing out some messages tomorrow, maybe we update really with parents and families to please partner with us. You know, prioritize school, huh?
The grade ten chart that shows the dip, we don't have a similar chart for grade nine, but it doesn't show a similar.
So grade nine, so in high school, ELA and math is only taken as very thin, and science is only very nice.
Okay, so then you have this chart that shows growth for grade nine. Is that?
This is in science.
The next, the next chart after, did you go to the next slide?
Yeah, I'm definitely. Sorry, thank you.
That is.
Sorry, this, they've just carried.
This is grade ten because they don't do best for science.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Next, we're gonna have our middle school principal, Matt Navangie.
Hello, everybody. I'm Matt Navangie, I'm the principal of vets. Very excited to be here tonight, really, really enjoy the kids at vets. It's been an amazing transition. Um, it's just, I can't see how enough of the kids and just how they, they just take school and it's just been a bad experience. But I'm gonna talk about last year's end test. Um, so we're gonna start off in seventh and eighth grade ELA. Um, so again, we were well above the state, um, both overall. And then in all the subcategories, reading, the language, the essay, and the writing.
You never broken up the grader?
Uh, no, we just have the new grader.
We wait a minute.
Yeah, I have. I, um, create a slide, I'll say it's on slide, and have, we have the SGP earlier by grade, we have, we do have a problem on the others.
Uh, for, oh, maybe for, oh, one thing, the other thing about ELA, sorry to go back, is that, um, we did have a five percent increase. Um, which, even though there was a little dip the year before, we got right back on the current trend on going up. Now we'll go to math. Um, same thing in math, uh, well above the state, um, we did have a little bit of a, a little bit of a dip. Uh, two points from the previous year, but um against the state and all the subcategories, we were well above. As well. Civics, this was um new, um, a lot of the kids adjusting to it. Um, as the test evolves, um, the kids adjust to the test. Um, so it was a little different than they had seen even in the pilot years. Um, again, against the state, we were well above. Both in the subcategories in overall. And then in science, um, this was again, a new test, it was a little different, there was pilots, there was a, uh. Like, everyone had to be taking part of it this week last year, but it was pilot as well. Um, and although I I will acknowledge that there was a little bit of a dip in here as well. It does show that the decision we made as a district to go to a more inquiry based curriculum. Um, that that is the right move, this score show it, that moving towards that where kids are. Involved more lab, trying to uh problem solve more, um, and more evaluation of evidence. That was because this evidence shows that that was a smart move.
Um, but then, so what he says, it was a thousand area to quote from, who's to address over the four issues that.
We weren't surprised, we knew we needed to do better in science, right? And that's why we did the curriculum review last year, so now this is the first year with the, with the new curriculum. So we're very hopeful for a positive turn. This has just been surprising some ways of, maybe we needed to, as they evolved with the standards and the assessment, cast assessment, and anyone. Uh, well, our, our curriculum was on page, yeah.
So looking at our student growth percentile, um, our growth was in the uh, was above state average, falling into the moderate to high growth. On average, our students made more than uh than an average year's growth across the board. An average year growth would be fifty percent or higher. We were above that. Um, and eighth grade ELA and seventh grade math stood out, um, is falling into the high growth category. Feel that's some strengths. Um, in seventh grade, we'll start with seventh grade in math, uh, top sixteen percent of all Massachusetts districts. This particular cohort of students grew seven percent in the meeting and exceeding category compared to the previous year. Eighteen percent of students were in the exceeding category. That's a five percent increase from the previous year for that particular cohort. And then we increased the state differential above the state from eighteen to twenty six above the state average. Seventh grade ELA, top fourteen percent of all Massachusetts districts. And we increased our overall uh essay proficiency for this cohort by seven percent. Strengths in eighth grade, eighth grade math, top eighteen percent of all Massachusetts districts, and twenty percent above the state average. Eighth grade ELA, top nine percent of all Massachusetts districts, and we had a high growth percentage of sixty seven percent. Science, top twenty four of all Massachusetts districts, and in civics, top eighteen percent of all Massachusetts districts. And nineteen percent above the state average. And looking at some areas of growth. Uh, we want to continue aligning common language and structures between the elementary schools and veterans to support student writing. We want to increase student discourse and group discussions to support problem solving skills. We want to support the implementation of the new inquiry based science program. We've restructured wind block allowing for more comprehensive intervention to support students. And we are creating enrichment opportunities to wind blocks to foster growth across all achievement levels. As well as we continue our advisory program to support students' social, emotional learning.
That is always.
I can take no credit for this.
Last year. That's always been.
I I feel pretty confident that the sign of science, that science forty percent is gonna go. Guys, we met today, we talked a little bit, I think it's just so hard to work and really looking at that. And really engaging and figure out ways to student, you know, how we support students differently, and I think. That's what, that's what we ask of our principals, and I think, you know, um, just everyone together, you know, like what, lots of stuff to stay by the staff. On the level of how seriously we make it, uh, here, to know how the practices, making sure that. I've seen in those areas, that is, who knows?
Well, Sean mentioned, I'm looking at the data at the high school, middle school had data meetings yesterday as well, so there's. This kind of the structure and culture that we've developed and we're supporting, and it's it's an ongoing process and. And this, this month is in caste data, but the next month, it will be the next, you know, data point for them to look at. So this culture of looking at data is really gonna continuously help us to improve. Thank you so much. But that's too welcome, our middle school principals, yes.
Good evening, uh, my name is Scott Williams, I'm the principal of Village School, um, my second year at Village. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening our M test performance of the administration's frame point five. Before I go through the slideshow, we have lots of celebrations and some areas of growth which we've identified. But I do wanna take a moment to say behind every data point, there is a student, a child, a caregiver, a teacher, an interventionist, a tutor. A curriculum coach, so I just wanna acknowledge the human part of all of this. Um, it's really important to us and to me. So, um, let's walk through the slideshow. On the left, you'll see this bar chart here. Um, this identifies our English Language Arts performance for grades four, five, and six. As you can see, we're outperforming the state, um, particularly in the area of reading seventy one percent. And then on the right, uh, again, you'll see in correlation, we are outperforming the state. And we are correlating in terms of our individual performance compared to the state. Um, there was a dip in twenty twenty two, we rebounded in twenty three, a slight dip in twenty four, and rebounded again in twenty five. And that captures grades four to six. The next slide captures math performance. Again, um, Village is performing quite strongly compared to the state. Particularly in numeracy, the number system, this breaks down the strands and the areas of content focus for for the area of mathematics. And then on the right, again, captures grades four to six math performance, um, strong outperformance compared to the Commonwealth. And um, we're very um status quo for twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five, uh, fifty eight, fifty eight, and fifty nine percent. Fifth grade science performed quite well this past spring. Um, again, on the left, the bar chart will show you, we're outperforming the states in all the content areas for science. Particularly in um technology and engineering. Um, and then on the right, outperformance compared to our states, uh. We did very well um compared to twenty four to twenty five, jumping to sixty one percent. So, great job to our fifth graders last spring. Assistant Superintendent Ferrera mentioned student growth percentile earlier, so this captures our growth snapshot. We are doing uh for fourth grade, slight underperformance compared to the state. Robust performance for fifth grade at fifty seven percent, and we have some area of growth for our sixth graders last spring, current seventh graders. On the right, you will see math captures, our sixth graders knocked it out of the park last year compared to the state. And we're on par for fifth grade and slightly underperforming for grade four in area of math. Uh, these are our gold stars, our areas of celebrations, and and I I I do not take credit for this, I share this with the village community at large. So, um, our current fifth graders, last year's fourth graders math, only three percent of our fourth grade students did not meet expectations on the math end pass. Students increased their performance by uh the, in the fraction domain by ten percent. ELA, the fourth grade reading comprehension, uh, sub score has grown seventy one percent correct, that's a record high. For fifth grade, our current sixth graders, uh, Village is in the top twenty five percent for the Commonwealth of Mass. We grew forty percent meeting and exceeding to sixty percent in the fraction domain, so clearly we're doing some great focus work in the area of fraction. For uh fifth grade, Village is in the top twenty percent compared to our district's overall performance on the essay. grew from thirty eight meeting and exceeding in fourth to fifty percent in fifth grade, very nice growth there year to year. Science, our fifth graders, again, I mentioned this earlier, are increased from fifty seven to uh sixty one percent meeting and exceeding. Our sixth grade celebrations, our current seventh graders, mass students top twenty percent of all math, uh, Massachusetts districts and the states. The differential increased from eighteen to twenty two percent. English Language Arts, four percent fewer students were in the did not meet expectations category, the lowest in three years. Um, all schools, we have to examine our practice for growth, and so these are some areas that I think we need to focus on at Village. Our ELA, we need to strengthen our best practice for writing instruction. I know this continued focus and instructional. Work in the area of writing for all of our grades. We've been part of those data. Work in the area of writing for all of our grades. We've been part of those data team meetings. We've been part of those PLC meetings. So that is our charge. We are strengthening student independence, stamina and comfortability with discourse. I've talked about this with our uh, our instructional leaders. We are rescuers in education. We want to help our students. But it's okay to have guided struggle and to promote stamina to. Children have to learn concepts. And so it's okay for us to help them and coach them, but we need to teach them grip and stamina. And adopt a growth mindset. We're not there yet. That's part of our practice. Uh, science support teachers during the first year of implementation of history science. We have implemented a new science curriculum this year. Um, our staff has asked us for additional PD opportunities, which we are offering in very short time. So um, I'm very excited for the the work I see in science, the scientific method, the inquiry hypothesis. Um, it it's kids like science. In my experience, they enjoy the kinesthetic part of that. So um, thank you for that. And then I see all, we are in our second year of our wayfinder program. We partner with PTO. Um, and we have some great work happening in the in the area of social emotional learning for our students. I'm sorry, can't hear you.
So first time I've ever seen. Someone say strengthen student independence, stamina, comfortability, comfortability, discourse and productive struggle. Solving complex amount of problems. So I love that, frankly. Um, love to see it on all of the subject matters, but uh, so how do you do that? Like, what does that look like?
We have to get our children where they're at. And build the tools and scaffold the approach, whether it be a curriculum coach, whether it be a teacher. Working on data collection over time. There's danger in one data point. You want to collect repository data over time. But it's really working as a team. And we have developed our instructional, um. We have our interventionist this year, a new staffing position at Village. Where those body of folks are working very closely with our teachers department. Um, our brain block really does address that as well, because we look at the snapshot of data. And we have to decide, well, what are we going to focus on for this child today? We track that over time. Um, when I say students need to struggle, I don't mean that in a negative way. But they have to own it. It's our job to coach them and guide them and get them. But I I I see, I see. Positive outcome.
We started to build in some routines. We did some professional development and professional learning around that discourse specifically. And so um, you know, back in the day, you go in, you get your lesson, you sit there. We're really shifting that. Our kids are needing more and more and. We did a lot of professional learning on the actual structure of the lesson to allow for that discourse. So you're not rushing through something where students, it is part of the time where they have to be talking and problem solving and critical thinking together. So we've done. Some of that professional learning as adults so that our students benefit.
And I think, and I think to feedback on that too, you know, I I have um. Concepts around like, you know, not sitting kids rows so staring at each other's heads, like how do we do quality learning groups? How do we have those conversations? And really, this boils down to that whole long sentence really boils down to how do we establish, maintain, foster. Really, that's that's what it's all about. I think, um. Yeah, we have to do that across all areas. This just happens to be one of the bigger areas that fills it. Um, Scott and his team identified. So. You know, I think I agree with you. That's great. You know, you have to.
Just because I I I'm a math person and um, so I I know, you know. And I've seen, you know, my own students who really struggle. And I feel like if you, it's like almost a foreign language when you. If you don't get it in the early years, by the time you're at high school, that's where you get the kitchen. I hate math, you know, and and. Not everybody's math kid, I of course stupid, but. To be able to do that, to be able to sit and be comfortable with the uncomfortableness of it, um, and get through it. That that's great that we have support for that. It's the first time I've ever seen. But you know, the same, different students can feel that way in science, or could feel that way in ELA. There's just different, um, probably different.
Yeah, growth requires getting out of your comfort zone and experiencing discomfort and overcoming those hurdles.
Thank you.
Well, this, this is my last. No, no. Um, th- these are, these, this is not new news. Um, we have spoken to this before. We're in our third year of Witten Wisdom ELA curriculum, our fifth year of Illustrious Math. And then our first year of Inspire Science, as I mentioned earlier. And then um, our multi-tiered systems of support. We have our professional learning communities are what I need, data-driven blocks. We have great enrichment. I have to give a shout out to the awesome teachers at Village. They're doing great things with our enrichment, extension activities, our newspaper, our Math Olympiads. Problem solving, lots of good things happen beyond the school hours at Village. And then um, our social emotional learning. We've partnered with our PTO this year and they have brought in Gene Skane. So Gee's doing a great job. She's in classrooms and I want to thank our PTO for that partnership and that funding. I'm happy to entertain.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome up our Glover's school principal, Frank Kowalski.
Good evening, everybody. Frank Bossy, lover principal, my second year. And my second year as an elementary school principal. And I'm starting to feel like well, because tired. Certainly way down. They bring the energy every single one. Well, they do try to keep me young. So I'm really proud to come here to talk to you, love Glover. And I do a lot of like last year was my first year. These results with my students from last year. Um, so I have, I prepared something, so something I need to ramble on. So I prepared my statistics. That way I can kind of get right to the facts. So, according to the remarkable progress of grade three, we we have ELA this spring. Glover's third grade is ranked in the top thirteen percent across Massachusetts, a tremendous accomplishment that reflects both our students dedication. And consistent high quality instructions from our teachers. We've seen steady significant growth in the meeting and exceeding expectations category, rising from fifty four percent. To seventy one percent since two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty five. That's a seventeen percent gain in just three years. Even more exciting, we're now point nine above the state average, up from eleven percent three years ago. This tells that growth isn't just eternal, but truly accelerating faster in the state overall. Our essay proficiency. Was also in rise in two thousand twenty two. Uh, essay performance was four percent above the state. Now it's thirteen percent above the state. Overall, these results affirm that our early literacy initiatives are aligned in our curriculum work of producing sustainable results. Our students are showing equally impressive growth. Glover is now top twenty percent of grade three programs in Massachusetts. A strong indicator of math instruction is both rigorous and responsive. Percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations have grown from fifty, from fifty two percent in two thousand twenty two. To sixty nine percent, two thousand twenty five. We're now twenty five percent above the state average from three years ago. The growth underscores the effectiveness of our early interventions and small group supports. And I talk about what uh, Principal Williams said, our support outside the classroom was tremendous. You walk along Glover any part of the day, whether it's eight o'clock in the morning or two twenty five at the central. You will see students in age in the hallways, doing early instructions from uh, coaches, from tutors. Uh, we don't stop at the end of the day. And you'll see that if you walk around the school. Uh, some of our strengths, one of uh, Glover's greatest strengths is early intervention. Now, we pretty much, we take a lot of pride in this. We find out the students that are struggling, need the supports. Um, we do a lot of data collections, data points, like like we all talk about, totally one assessment. We try to find many assessments to find out where exactly our kids are. Assistance for identifying, supporting students early, particularly in reading and math foundational skills, are ensuring that no student falls to the cracks. By focusing uh, by focusing on strong teamwork instruction and target support, we'll cultivate independent leaders. Writers and thinkers who approach learning with confidence. That's important to us. We don't want, we want robots. We want kids to think on their own. We give them open and questions. We don't tell them what they should be saying. We kind of. Give them a good question and we give them wait time so they can think about the their answer and then they come up with their answers. And no answers wrong, some are funny, but no answers are wrong. In areas of growth. Even with a strong performance, we're committed to continuous improvement, right? We don't, like, this is a brand new year, so we have a lot of work to do. This year we'll focus on building data literacy with PLCs to strengthen strengthen our use of data to guide instruction and deep professional dialogue. Continue to support the teachers in the third year of Witten Wisdom Implementation, ensuring ensuring alignment and depth in literacy instruction. Further develop math interventions and win structures, and finally enhancing collaboration, which is super important at this level. Kids need to talk to each other and work together. Each of these priorities build on our current success and keeps our momentum strong, keeps us really focused and still. In closing, Glover's M test growth is a clear reflection of our school-wide commitment to excellence. And strong fashion instruction to early intervention, data-driven practice. We're very proud of our students, teachers in our target community of workers last year. We look to improve on this year.
It's grade three, right, is the M test, but and that's amazing, amazing increase. Uh, and I think, again, I'm not an educator, but I would regret to say that the grade three results. Are the combination of K through three involving, right? So I'm considering kindergarten for some grade teachers. Um, which which is actually great. And Glover, you know, Glover's been through a lot. Last, you know, forty years and bring that, I mean, so for our. You know, students and our teachers to maybe just to be able to do this is, you know, it's really. Testament to. Their strength.
Thank you. And you're right. It is a key for victory. Process. And honestly, we're we're looking forward to supporting Village. And we'll look really looking forward to seeing our grade four and cast data in the spring to see how much progress the students are making. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Welcome, Principal Mary Maxfield, the Lupisha and Joseph Brown school.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mary. Um, it's Philip Brown. Happy to be here. Uh, we're off to a great start this year, already finishing up our first intervention cycle. Uh. And looking forward to seeing that data over the next couple of weeks. Um, I want to echo what uh, Scott said about behind every student, there is an entire team of. Parents and and parent professionals and teachers. And um, I thought he. Uh, spoke to that point incredibly well and um. You know, they're they're all working together to not, to make sure that kids not only succeed academically, but also behaviorally, emotionally, socially. Um, the whole child, especially our little ones, where they're just really trying to figure it all out. Uh, so we have some great data to share tonight, um, some areas that we are looking at, um. I'm looking for my site. Are we going? Oh, there you go. Okay, great. Um, the first slide we see is the ELA data, um. Again, overall, you can see that we are exceeding the state in all the overall ELA. I was said that we stayed the same in terms of percentages from last year. Uh, but we do exceed the state overall pretty significantly. Um, but also in the uh, some subcategories, I think the language piece is the one that I was most excited about. Uh, because of the Witten Wisdom and that uh, productive struggle that we ask kids to do. And the the inquiry based model that we're at, we're really exposing them to much more. Um, specific language and much deeper thinking and vocabulary usage. So um, I I do think that there may be a correlation there. So. Looking, looking forward to seeing that grow again this year. Um. Obviously, when we look at the subcategories here, the uh, most concerning is the essay and the writing. And I think that's pretty glaring. Um, I'm also very curious about it because um, it's consistently low, not just with us, but across the state. It just seems like. I'm I'm curious. So if it's always, you know, in the thirty percents across the whole state, I'm wondering about that. Positive plus. Um, when we look at the math, uh, again, you can see that we exceed the state uh, pretty significantly. We dipped down a few points overall from sixty one to fifty eight percent from last year. However, from. Since twenty two, we've gone from forty six to fifty eight percent. So still over time, uh, we're we're headed in the right direction. Uh, the subcategories, again, we exceeded the state in all of those subcategories as well. Uh, pretty. Um, overall, our math celebrations, fifty eight percent as compared to forty one percent, some great growth in the math meeting, um, and exceeding category. Uh, uh, numbers and operations and algebraic thinking very strong. And I was most excited about that part. Um. Uh, the same with the the language skills, um, but also with these two things. We know that if kids have number concept and they understand. How numbers work and they have those basics. It's kind of like if you have your phonics and your phonemic awareness, you can start to build a system for reading. Really and truly, we need to have those fun foundational skills for the math to get that more complex thinking, to get them to. Start thinking more and 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 that productive struggle with math that we were talking about earlier. Um, we are in the top thirty percent of Massachusetts elementary schools for math and seventeen. Uh, percent above the state average, ELA, as I um. Said in the earlier slides, some really good growth there since twenty two. Uh, top fifteen percent of Massachusetts elementary school, twenty three percent above the average. Um, one of the things that I noticed in the. When we started digging deeper into the math and the reading, um, I wanted to know how many kids were like on the cusp. And if you look into uh, one of the platforms that we use. You can really get lost in it, go down a lot of the call. It's just a lot of fun sometimes. Um. But one of the things that they'll help you do is try to figure out how many kids just missed it by like one or two uh, questions. And. For reading, it was ten kids. So um, that would, and we have about a hundred kids, so that's significant. For math, it was seventeen kids who just missed the mark. So I think that for us, that tells us to dig in to the item analysis. Where are they missing? Are they common areas that they're missing, one or two areas? And how can we help them understand how they need to show their thinking, show their learning? On that kind of sense. So I think that was some good information for us. Um, areas of growth, always room to uh, improve item analysis and digging deeper into that ready data. I'm very curious about that. Um, there's also a lot of, um. A lot of variables with the writing piece for third graders. They, I don't know if you know, but they have to type their essay. Um, on the computer. So they are, a lot of kids are literally hunting and pecking when they're doing that. So. I'm I'm curious about that, um, whether or not. What, how much of that aspect it is for some of those kids who are struggling with it. And I'm curious about that across the whole state. Because when I think about the access that all students have to, not just a keyboard, but uh, not just a computer. But keyboarding and not, I mean, most kids at that level are doing this. They're not doing this. So um. I'm really interested to see if there's a correlation between that, that piece of it. Uh, so moving forward, our school improvement plan, we're using multiple data tanks to identify not just the learning needs, but the instructional needs. So if our kids aren't learning, um, that's behooves us, like, what is it that we need to do differently instructionally? Uh, and then correlating that the learning trends with those instructional needs as well. Um, also taking those ends, and this is where I'm sort of pushing this now, um. And moving that into a teacher inquiry cycle. So looking at the data overall, seeing what that trend is. And then where do we need to improve instructionally? And then how do we do that? Do we do that professional development? Do we do that by? Uh, observing one another in classrooms and just went through um, some observations that you're doing of one another. I attended a great PLC this afternoon of uh, teachers sharing their observations with one another, what they noticed, what they wondered. What they would do differently, what they learned from one another. It was fantastic. Um, uh, that was the second grade team. They were doing a great job. Um, looking at progress monitoring system for math intervention cycles, we're doing pretty well with that with regard to ELA, but. For math, we don't have a consistent one, other than the I-ready, which is beginning of the year, mid-year, end of the year. And it's also a little dicey in the middle because it's measuring things that we haven't yet taught. So that's a little tricky. Um, and sometimes confusing for parents. Um, so we are looking at our title one funding to see if we can purchase. Um, we're looking at different ones to pilot and then possibly put in, I'm using the title one funds to put in an intervention. Part uh, progress monitoring tool there. So wonderful. Um, as I was digging deeper, one of the things that was pretty amazing, um, I was. Flabbergasted by this and this just really was not what I expected at all. So there's um, one of the filters you can use is that looking at how long kids have been at their school. So you can look at. And I expected to see a difference in the scores between kids who had been there just one year or just arrived that year and kids who had been there all four years. What I didn't expect was when I looked at kids who have been there three years and four years, the significant difference. So we're talking about kids who start with us and. So we're talking about kids who start with us in kindergarten, so for kids in ELA. Who had been with us for three years, they were forty-six percent proficient, seventy-two percent for the kids who'd been there all four years. That. That just blew me out of the water, it was like. Right, but exactly. Um, and then for math, it was from forty-six, forty-six to sixty-three percent in math, I mean. That's just one year and we can, you can't always tell with other schools when there's sort of that mid-year. Grades, which years they were there, but when you're a K to three, you know, that's the year they missed, it was kindergarten, right? So our kids, so, so that behooves us to look at those incoming first graders, what are we doing? How are we making sure that we're assessing them when they first come in, that we, if we haven't had any kindergarten? Um, and shout out to our kindergarten and, and all of us, and I appreciated what you said too, Jen, about like, that's the culmination, that. That assessment is really a combination, not of just what Scott was saying about how every child has that whole team behind them, but. They have that whole school behind them, truly, um, and so. I, I think, um, we've got some work to do, obviously, there's always some areas of growth, but we've got some great shining points too, and some good information going.
So if you, we typically, I ran out of this off the top of your head, but when you talk about students coming in at first grade. Is the assumption that they did kindergarten somewhere else?
They did sometimes, often, yeah. Uh, I would say the majority of them that come in. Yep, the majority, um, are at other kindergartens. Yep. It's, it's just, it's phenomenal, uh, I did not expect that to vary.
And they might get other things, but. In a different setting, but.
And even just the systems, right, the, the foundation, like how we approach the, you know, the phonics, the primary, you know, ways that we get all those foundational skills. Yep. I mean, we're doing Socratic seminar in kindergarten. Pretty impressive. Anything else?
What, what percent of kindergarten students are full-time versus half-day?
Uh, almost all, nine.
It is almost all.
I've maybe every year about one or two.
A difference, okay.
And typically because they choose to, they, uh, not because they can't, but they had said to me. You know, I, I just want more time with my, my child for, you know, a movie or something, but. Typically the case.
Again. You know, it's another, it's time for full-aid.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. We have two slides left. Um, so. We have worked over the last few years to strategically develop our multi-tiered systems of support, as you heard our leaders share with you. Um, which has created many opportunities, um, for us to have an in-depth data analysis to meet the needs of our students. Uh, we want to thank our families and their ongoing support, um, in addition to our students, right? Because we feel that together, that partnership is really important. Um, so if families haven't already, we encourage them to take the time, um, if they did have a student that took the M-CAS assessment. To look at the test results and have those conversations, as well as when we send home other data, uh, measures, uh, like report cards. Our DIBELS and our IXL and our I-ready, um, assessment data as well. And my last slide, so we, um, very proud of the work that our educators, our instructional coaches and our leaders have done. Um, to strengthen our NTSS structure, adopt evidence-based curriculum, implement assessments. That help us monitor student performance on a continual basis. And we utilize our PLC, that's our professional learning community structure to align and strengthen instruction, and that's ongoing work, and we're very proud of it. So thank you for this opportunity, and as promised, there is our.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Julia, I just want to add just, uh, uh. Very proud of all of our administrators came tonight and shared the data, I think, um, overall, we have a lot of ones to celebrate, I think they were really good about. Really showing the good in the, in the, in the areas that we need to grow in, and, um, I think it's important, so we have to look at all the areas. I think, uh, a lot of things that we put into place, I want to thank the school committee asking present, um, for helping to, uh. Prove adoption, some of those curricular, um, curriculum that have been put into place in the last couple of years. Because we've seen, we've seen our, our way fine of the, you know, the, um. Science and everything else, and it's, and it's good, and I think we're having, we're having a lot of conversations where. That similar language is being, um, shared across schools, and I'm, I'm really digging to making sure we're not. Operating in silos, making sure that there's, there's transition, so we're having all those discussions and. I think moving forward, you gotta continue to see how that will positively impact student growth, student achievement. And just the overall culture of the school, so I just wanted to, again, say thank you to the principals for coming inside and sharing the data and for. Julia and, um, instructional coaches, et cetera, and especially all the teachers and. Um, instructional assistants who work with the kids each and every day, make sure that they know what they need and. Lately for the parents, there's work on ratio in a sense. We say it takes a village, it takes a.
Just want to reiterate, you know, thanking everyone for all the effort and energy that went into this. Um, I do want to reiterate, Jen, I think made a point earlier, and I've asked for this for a couple of years now, I, I think you've taken a big step around. Not just looking at the state average, right, looking at whether it's the dark schools, or whether it's what we think consider a better subset. But it would be nice to see that flow through the whole, all the data that we saw, and you know, that's probably some complications because of. How do you do the composites? But, uh, maybe that's where the dark schools might, I think Desi might do some of that for us, but anyway, I just want us to continue. Um, you know, I heard above state average so much, and we are, and that's very good news, but I don't think that's the proper benchmark for us. What is, I think we have to, you know, I don't want to do it tonight, but I think we need to discuss what, you know, what those proper benchmarks might be and potential targets.
Yeah, and, and I would agree, and you know, we, we did, we did some adjustments from last year based upon that, um, and, you know, you know, continue to do that, and I think for me. Compare ourselves to ourselves, whether like the growth like our students achieving and our like growing is more important than any other thing, whether we're, you know. Compare ourselves to Lexington or not, uh, or Endor or whatever, that's great. But it's really ourselves, ourselves is really the most important, I mean, the states, you know, benchmarking, I mean, benchmarking stays low, and no one's denying that. Um, it's a benchmark, it's not a benchmark, but I really think how we, how are our students growing here over the years really. That piece, and then, yeah. Middle part that you're asking for, we'll have those conversations, we'll, again, next year. Come up with, uh, hopefully, an even more robust way of showing that, I appreciate that, need that.
Is, is this, I'm sorry, is this data available at the Desi site yet?
So what you'll see, yes, all the data is there, um, when it says district though, it is going to be all marble-type students, so just say they mentioned them for. Um, the dark districts are there, we can open our context, so, uh, beyond what we can do, that's our data platform. Beyond that, we also do, we have a lot of the coaching team and I have a lot of data on North Shore, we'd be like to look. Our neighbors, and I also collaborate really well with the, um, district leaders in other districts to see how, you know. What's going on, so we do look very North Shore as well, issue two, so we could, I, I have to talk about that as well. What, what would be the best, uh, and we can make those adjustments in our open architects, guess who sets the dark district self. And yes, in, in the, um, if you just, I think, search up like Desi Marblehead. Um, and then it's the assessment tabs, and you can go through all the data there as well.
And I think, I think it's important to reiterate, if you're looking on there and you see district and you say, hey, that's not what was in the slide tonight. It's forever, it's because it encompasses, uh, students are not in her district, so I just want to be clear about that. And, and hopes are, have those conversations, so just want.
Do the numbers include substantially separate classrooms, it's all students?
Yes.
So I was starting to have been for this presentation, because I, I think the numbers. Tell a story, but they don't tell the full story, and to have the, the principals coming and really give us some. Of the stories behind the numbers is fantastic, I'm, I'm going to encourage everyone to, to watch this presentation if they have the schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you, all, thank the other teams, I've been through many of these, and there has been some frustration in the past, frankly, around. It sometimes felt like, you know, talking about state average, you know, focusing on, you know, some incremental improvements. And kind of not talking about the elephant in the room, which is that, you know, we have students who are not, you know, where they need to be, and I. But I really appreciate all of you and the work you made, because what I heard tonight was, you know, here's the reality. And this is what's working, this is what we need to work on in real, real tangible things that non-educators can. You know, can relate to, we're not, we're not, I'm not a professional, uh, but, but I heard. Clear plans, um, is to, to affect this and to make those incremental, you know, changes. It also seems to be completely a conspiracy, and we might be finally falling out of the fold. Um, I don't know if that's true or not, but it just appears like that, you know, that there's some hope on the horizon and. Uh, it was a very, very, very difficult time, clearly, and that maybe we're, we're starting to. Come out of it, and, um, and that's great news, so thank you all, really, you did great, great work, cheer. Yeah.
Thank you.
I like the Q R code, that's a, that's a neat statement. Who do I call when I can't figure it out? All right, um, again, thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on to the consent action and agenda items. Uh, before I do that, there's one item that I had placed there, uh, around, uh, moving. Meeting minutes, and I think we need to do a little more discussion around that, is that, is that true, Henry?
Well, we, we were going to discuss sort of meeting minutes, but I did have a note on the meeting. That I submitted, I wasn't in the meeting, so I didn't have notes, so there are a couple missing items in those minutes. Um, I'm trying to start on my, uh, when we went into executive session, and the audio cut out. For, um, consent action and agenda items, so I don't have, we made that note of motion, mainly. The votes for that, so we can just, someone could provide me with that information, I can still let it, but, uh, we, if we can vote for these minutes. You know, when those came this.
And I, I'd ask, ask for it as an agenda item.
It is. It's, it's under.
What is later on?
Yes, it's in, it's in G D.
Oh, sorry.
All right, uh, so here we can conclude the minutes with. Okay, so I'd like to, um, looking for a motion to approve the following. The identified schedules of bills totaling one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents. The school committee meeting minutes of ten, fifteen, twenty-five, with the discussed edits. And then the approval of the following policy updates. CEA administration goals, CB, school superintendent, CBI, evaluation of the superintendent. CCB, line and staff relations, CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion passes five zero. Okay, um. Under school community communication and discussion items, we have a third reading. Of the middle school pathway explo- exploration.
Uh, Jay, if there are any, is just, if there's any questions from the last reading, because there's going to be the, even better discussed, if not, it's just going to.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes.
I've got a good of the, um, the violent instructional program too, uh, just want to double check on that. I need to, I, but I, I think that.
Well, that's the recommended.
Yes, we just wanted to. A little detail, one important room.
Especially like there's a change, I think, in the admissions process. Starting at HDMT, wasn't it?
As we focus, this doesn't affect this, how, how do we prepare it, but make the point that like, yeah. We, I guess, also to be seen numbers.
And, and, and quite frankly. Supposed to always be the one way, they just. State had to start it, should kind of. So just, there's no, there's no questions, there's no.
Yeah, they had their exit presentation today, this is a practice we've been doing for years, um, it's just.
So I make the motion that we approve of a policy I H P that I can actually.
Any discussion, further discussion, uh, all in favor? All right, the motion passes five zero. Yeah, two donations I'd like to discuss, um. So I'm looking for a motion around a sandbox installation. Towards the goal of a Brown School free K sandbox, James Wilson Company will pay, build and complete this project as a donation. The preschool teachers led by Mrs. Connolly, Brown School Principal Mary Maxfield and Director of Facilities, Todd Bloodgood are behind this coming to fruition. This project will allow children to thrive as their senses are activated through play, and many children enjoy playing, to building, moving and interacting with their parents. Yeah, I'm looking for, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
Emotions for the sandbox.
Second.
All second. Yeah. Yeah. So Justin Welch is, is the gentleman who is, is behind, um. Involved in, in helping to donate, uh, we happened to be in meeting with Julie about something completely different the other day, so I was able to meet and we said. Oh, well, let's do it, so it was kind of cool, it was kind of, uh, fortuitous, it sounded something, it's for me, so. Um, the offering services, um, you know, and I think, I don't know, it's in here somewhere, but, uh, the, the, the. Number, actually the amount is somewhere I need to find. Okay, so like, that's, that's a fact considerable, and it was really, really nice, um, to make sure that, um. Person's giving back to the community, he was doing it, so it's all, all it's nice, I want to make this, um, really sky, at the opportunity.
Yeah, it's love.
Yeah, I just, don't be like, says, I just hope when we go on the inside. We don't want kids fighting to be relaxed.
The motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? All right, the motion passes four zero. I'm looking for a motion towards accepting a five hundred dollar cash donation from Making Ends Meat Foundation into the Marblehead. Public Schools Medco Donation Fund. This donation is provided as a gift to supply snacks for students and faculty associated with the Medco program.
Secondly.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, the motion passes four to zero. All right.
How will you do, thank yous?
Yes, I will. Let's see, all right. Would you ever just set the, uh, the draft of meeting minutes? Island.
Uh, yeah, well, I think. So again, from a perspective, maybe it will help for us as well, like historically, we always had. Um, a, an admin person that tended to be the superintendent's admin system, who was also the school committee administration assistant. And that person did do some admin support, which included, among other things, from the city. Um, doing all meeting minutes for school members. And that evolved over time, so that was no longer the case, um, but. We still had someone on staff that we paid to dive into, which we are budgeting for. Uh, to do our main meeting minutes, it was never the responsibility of secretary to actually draft the meeting minutes. It was the job of the secretary to clerk, it's really effectively there, to review them and submit them for approval, so that. So sometimes this conversation, so. What we did, what I did last year is I, I used that budget to contract with this, I would say, company all about town. That drafts them, I guess it's AI from the video recordings. And creates the, the draft, um, and one of the things I happen to like about the one that we're using is they have timestamps. For the different, for the different, um. That, you know, items on the agenda, so that if you, the spirit of transparency, if you're from the public and you're reading it, you can, and you're like, oh, I love it, here we go. Video, so I think it's a good system, um, it's not perfect, right, because it misses, it's, it's misses stuff we all mumble. And it's, the voice recognition isn't great, so it does miss some of the votes. With the names of who first, who second, so it does have to be reviewed, but I personally think it's a good system, I like to use it for the subcommittees, because it really. You know, get it out as soon as the recording is loaded, and you can just go through and make the changes, so I did. You know, get it out as soon as the recording is loaded and you can just go through and make the changes. So I did encourage Henry to. Reach out to Joel from all about town, because I think that he can make. It better than it is. I mean, there's some ability to support programming to produce drafts. Formatted closely what, that's what we want. So that's all, it was just because they. We've got all these different versions of the, Kate, you're using something for subcommittees, Harry using something else, I'm using all about town, so. I was just suggesting that we. Get some sort of.
Yeah, so just to, to follow up, I did contact Joel. Um, it, he's. Great, I mean, he really responded very quickly. He's, he, I think he's already working on those changes, so. Um, the meeting minutes for this meeting, I think will be. Not there, they'll be closer and we could work, we'll work back and forth to get them there. Um, you know, there's some things that I, I just think we never really communicated, you know, putting in. Certain informations that, uh, that needs to be. So I, the other thing that's worth noting is that I, I, I want to set future. School committees up for success. You know, to provide them with a resource rather than having to sort of. Build from scratch or do the minutes themselves, some of that's going to help us get. Uh, on more complete record minutes, so. I think this issue is resolved. I think we can bring it up again, but i- if anybody has. Any recommending changes to the meetings, you know, to the format. Uh, Joel's more than willing to make them. I'm happy to contact him, so, um. Yeah, I think I, I don't think there will be a vote here, but I'll.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking, I just wanted to bring it out. And I also, the other thing I will say is that. Some of the things that get missed, I think, with the voice recognition, like the first and second stuff, we. According to Robert's rules anyway, should be doing a little bit of a better job of. You know, motion made by Kate, I remember separated by him across that. Roll, you know, roll call a vote, or if it's all in favor, just being clear about that, I think will also go a long way.
Yeah.
And we should be doing.
Those edits are pretty, like, if you're taking notes and they're minor notes. Those edits happen very quickly, so I, I don't think that. The expectations that we're submitting. Perfect.
Thanks.
And it's, you know. So, uh, I, I also wanted to note that he is. He's, is contracted or has been supplying me minutes for all the sub. Minutes as well, except for communication, which I asked him to look. Um, so I think we can. If everybody's up there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wait, when we filled the secretarial position back in June, we did discuss. Those responsibilities with the positions, so. That shouldn't be a surprise. Now, I, I agree with you, Jen.
Except for actually drafting, like, we do need to have a resource.
No, well, that's different. So the responsibility is Henry's, how it's done is, I think, also responsibility of, of Henry and. I did encourage him to, if there's tools, whoever using them, existing ones or new ones or working with other town. You know, meetings that are happening, you know, I, I'm all for trying to stabilize on one, if it does meet all our needs and if someone feels there's something that they need is very different. And then we address that then too, so.
Yeah.
I think standardizing and having a link is super helpful. How much does it cost? Because there's just so many A I tools now that support you exactly.
It's six, six dollars a meeting, so I know it is six dollars for a school meeting, it lasts for.
Well, and I, I believe what. Saying is that that's half the price that. It is, so it is true that there are a lot of free. And I, I was using that.
Yeah.
What, what will be provided is, is better than. What the results that I've gotten from free A I tools and also again. For the longevity sort of uh, of this tool. To not have to train a, a new secretary clerk to. To figure out how to do it at a good A I property.
Yeah. Then for me was the hesitation is just. You know. A I is becoming more and more user friendly and at some point it probably will be. You know, probably replace that personally, you know, but I think it's certainly. You know, we paid someone to sit and watch the meeting and drafting minutes, so you know, if someone is putting in. Time and energy to generate. Um, I have raised this with Henry, but one thing. From the current versions we've been getting, if minutes do not actually. Clearly state what the motions are, or they're just. And a topic in the same motion may be seconded. Um, and really that's what our minutes should be, is a record of the motions that were made. And how they put it, and I think by language of the motions, it's.
Which is also that that. Perspective, we should be clearly stating the motion. So even though someone makes a motion, right, it's. That motion should actually, or, or the, or the clerk should be writing that down and, and probably should be saying. Anyway, that may help with recognition, it may not be perfect, but. We have a tendency, and we'll talk about this just in second in the next subject matter, on this agenda item. Um, sometimes our motions get long, they get kind of bogged down and it really should be. Clear.
Uh, for us to get it practiced, and like you said, it's involved in schools. I did want to. Know, well, anytime you're using an A I tool, and I, I think it's important for the public to know this, that, that I do review. The output of that A I tool, you never sort of just go with what anything was going to say, so, uh. There's always. Hopefully they'll always think of it as on the A I. So, yeah, this is.
Right. Thank you. Um, next item is. Uh, refers to open meeting violation. And, uh, Jen, I believe you had said we need to vote on suggested remedies.
Yeah, so to see, so folks know, so I, I think it was our last meeting. I had a question about our, we voted to. File an open meeting complaint. Our open meeting, um, violation and that hadn't been done, so I offered to do it. So I went online, I spoke to the state and I went online and I filed it. So what was put into the initially to the open draft was the. Summary that I had done, the actual complaint, which is what we should be discussing, I wasn't, so I got it in there today, I was ready by chance to see it. So there's no actual like self-reporting. Mechanism, it's, it's a complaint. Um, and so what I did is I filed it as a complaint on behalf of the committee. Explain what, what happened, explain what we voted, what I realized, at least in my, in my notes, is that. We voted to self-report an open meeting violation. I had suggested, made some suggestions on a remedy, and part of the complaint is that the complaint needs to suggest remedies. And then the board will decide by goal, whether they accept those remedies or will do different set of rules. So my. I'll make motion, we, we need to do that, some of this process, is to go. The corrective action, to adopt a corrective action and then. And then it's all. So what I had suggested, did it the last time, we got to discuss it, is that. Um, my suggestion is all school community members take a mandatory open meeting or take an open meeting law training. Which I think some of us. Two weeks ago. Yeah, and there's plenty, I can work with you off line, there's plenty available. And that we all, and this is, you know. This is something that we really. Need to be, you know, thoughtful of, is that we, we that we will, we will refrain from violating. Um, that's just a commitment to our community, uh, that we will be mindful of it, because it can get, you know, I've said it before, it gets. Flunky, it gets, um. You know, it, it has to be something that we need to be consciously. In the spirit of transparency. So, uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, for corrective action for the open meeting violation to, uh, all school community members. Model school community members will, will take in or a test that they have taken a mandatory open meeting law training. Since October fifteenth or October.
September.
September thirtieth, since September thirty, or after September. And all school community members, uh, model school members shall refrain from violating or wrongdoing in future. That's the motion.
All seconded, but.
So any further discussion? Alright, um, does this need to be a roll call, Jen? Is this?
Well, I, I can see that.
Okay, uh, Jen?
In favor?
Kate?
In favor.
Melissa?
In favor.
Henry? When it's facing the wrong. I'm sorry, you said in favor. Al Williams in favor, so the motion passes five zero. Okay, um. Our next item is around, uh, I'll start with the. Facilities Subcommittee Chair, all other subcommittees have a chairperson. Um, so we need to, uh. See if anyone is interested. Jen, I believe at the last meeting, she was not interested. I don't, has that changed?
I did, so I, I caught, I watched the last, so I, I'm willing, yeah, I'm willing to serve the chair of the facilities subcommittee.
Alright, so. I'd like to make a move. Like to make a motion that Henry Waza is the. Chairperson of our facilities subcommittee. Okay, uh, all in favor? Alright, the motion passes five zero. Are there any other subcommittee or liaison update for us tonight?
I have two, um, the communications subcommittee, who met, um, I think the biggest. Point of discussion was that. We, we need to. Do better, we need to be better about communicating, but we do not really have our own tools. Or can we, we don't have, uh, you know, we don't have a social media presence, we don't have our own email server or list service. And, um, I think it would be worth developing, because I know the district has one. Um, but I think that. Our audience is a, a little different from, uh, the district audience and there's certainly a lot of overlap. Um. Also. Would mean that, John, you wouldn't need to. Approve everything that we want to send out, you know, because we would. Not be using the list. Um. I think there's a lot of value in having our own tools and again, being able to pass those down to. First school communities so that they also have tools. Um, so. I don't know that we. Came here looking for a vote or anything. But Melissa and I are going to explore how we can build that. We were thinking, maybe asking with. Those, if they would be willing to send out a message to have people sign up for our newsletters. Uh, or for our email list and send out communications. Um. So, uh, I, I think we have, we have a lot of work to do, but I'm hoping that it will have some longevity. I don't know.
Yes, so I'll just make sure. So if you guys, so you would still use your Swansea, I mean, you're obviously. Well, add an email, but you're just looking for it to be able to develop your own, the surf like through P T O's.
Yes, a- and I, I now that say that, I love that, I mean. I didn't propose that it would be sitting on communications without your approval. I was just trying to, um. You know, think about how we could have our own list, but it would be. Yes, it would just be an email list, not an email address.
Oh, okay. So I'm just thinking, I know that, I know the town has, you know, there, there. Communication except on the town side.
You would need an email address.
Yeah, but.
Well, yes, but I, I, I don't think, I, I'm not, I'm not really proposing that we have our own sort of email account that's. School, I think we could use.
Well, who's in a minute?
You know, it's your own domain.
We don't need our own, correct.
But somebody's going to have to manage.
Well, someone is going to have to manage the list, I think it. It would be worthwhile to explore some vendors to do that, because there are obviously a lot of vendors who manage email lists. You know, so it would like, uh, MailChimp is probably the one that ever. Uh, and so that would, that would, they would build the list, they would allow people to unsubscribe, there were a lot of people to sign up. It wouldn't be like a, I'm definitely not proposing that we manually. Edit a, 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 of this. Just explore some ways and possibly some vendors, again, if costume or. Uh, who could help us sort of build this.
And there is a Facebook page and an Instagram. Um.
Yeah, I did explore that, I, I, it's. There's a couple Facebook pages, I'm not sure which one.
I have the B.
Okay, and but how many followers do?
No, no, we never lost.
Oh, yes, that's so, that's, yeah.
I mean, it's out there, but there's nothing on there, because we never, this committee, the, the, in the past couple of years, the committee did not agree. Social media.
I think we're.
It exists, whatever.
It exists, yes, I did notice that. We haven't really done too much discussion around social media. I think we're sort of focusing more on direct communication. Uh, but that's good to know.
I did notice on the, um. Agenda for the M A S E conference, there is a session on for social media. So, someone. Sit in on that session would be the, you know, beneficial information.
Um, any other questions regarding communications?
I was gonna ask, you know, I think it's great that we're developing these tools, but we're not communicating. Well, for figuring out how to communicate, and I know, you know, the committee was sending out newsletters. Last year, and so I wanted to raise the possibility of, you know, maybe not a monthly newsletter, maybe. Quarterly or some, you know, something now that updates on what's happened since. Uh, June, July, um, you know, whether. We could develop something like that, and I believe that last year was newsletter. But they came like now, this within the, like I as a parent.
Yes, more.
Yeah, we can still do that.
You know, what, what happened to me, um, it was something at one point where it's a bit quick snapshot.
The Instagram recap, yeah, so. That's one of the communication tools that we're developing. But it's really. It's, it would be very different from what, from a newsletter, it's not a newsletter, but it's really meant to be. In case you're wondering, the specific things we talked about. Here's what it is, but, um. So, yes, I think we do need. A, a different email tool, I mean, I don't want to bloat it too much, obviously, but I think quarterly is pretty reasonable to say, here's what we've done in the past three months. Maybe here's what we're planning on doing with the next three months. Wow, so that's definitely something. Discuss.
Do you guys know who is putting that? So is the subcommittee that's putting it together and sending it through? Yeah, so.
We use more a lot in the district, really like, and I just want to highlight, um, it's really nice that you can translate it into so many languages, or do you have. Families that speak, um, different languages, so I just, if I could add, there's so many benefits to this more. One side, one thing we did notice is that only one person can work on it, though, you can't like. So that does get your logistics and you are both trying to work on a communication, so. We use it because we create our own things to send, you know, I wanted to offer that feedback, but.
Okay.
Right.
Or you, you know, share documents.
Yeah, not one person.
Yeah.
Who's strongly encouraged, you don't do the editing. They document together, to get somebody drops it and somebody else groups.
And I just, I want to, I obviously the L program, English learner, so anything you do, we could just have that, as a practice, we looked at if it can. Get translated into, and smore, you can pick your own, so you don't have to. Yeah, they can pick their own, so they don't have to work, just whatever the product is, I just want them to.
If it's right now, it's shot for the progress.
Yeah, I would suggest. Building a list service. You know, whole effort, that would be great, but if you choose to do smores in the meantime, it, it's not, it just, you know, we don't. We as school community members don't have the access to send all of them, but that would just, it was John or Lisa or Manning or Steven or something.
So once it's what, it's easier for, once it's proof and ready to go, and it's at least man, it's, they have this post in, then she goes to Steven and shoots it out. And then he, because he's got to make sure those two. Of all our parents, or otherwise they'll be students care. Of all our parents, or otherwise they'll be students care. It's that, you know, maybe our digital device, or our serverless stuff, so those daddy buddies around there, people in the trees, and then transfer, so that's probably.
But to your point about building a lister. It only go, so it's great, it goes to all families, but it only goes to families, so I don't get, yeah, because I, I don't, like, you know, we don't get anything, it's basically, I guess, Aspen. Um, so there's something to be said about, you know. It's a parallel, you know, we can do that in the near term, but building a lister would also allow us to process out of. Whether folks in the community who are interested.
That's, yeah, absolutely, well, then it would be entirely opt-in, right, like you wouldn't just say, let's hear. Good question. Um.
It's not opt-in for our families.
No, and for us, I mean, it would happen. Um. If there's nothing else, I do have an update from the roof. Committee and, and Mike, if I, this is really just about the timeline. Um, that we can expect here with this committee, so we were originally going. Uh. Choosing a contractor. Uh, from the, from the bids. Um, in the roof subcommittee on November sixth. And looking to approve that. In this committee, like by the fourteenth, I'm thinking the thirteenth, but the, the schedule has shifted a little bit. So the roofing subcommittee is meeting on the fourteenth. To, I'm, I'm going off, this is what, um, I think Nina sent us, I had, um. This is the most recent, uh, but. The, the fourteenth for the roofing subcommittee. To meet and vote on a, on a bid. And then. We would want the school committee and the select board to approve that bid. Between November seventeenth and twenty, so.
It is, to be honest, the sixth and the twenty, November sixth and November twenty.
So. Hey, can I?
Yes.
Man, I think, um. The subcommittee. Is going to make a recommendation to the full committee as to whether we should go with the liquid applied or.
Yeah, that's essentially.
Right, that's, that's, that's what they're tasked with, is, that's, that's their primary focus right now, is to figure out which process is best. We were intending to bring that recommendation to the school committee for next Thursday's meeting, but that is now being pushed off, as Henry has said, until the weekend of the seventeenth. When we get into. The, my opinion is that it should come to the school committee first, because. Select board has to approve the form of the contract, but not so much the, the method of. Instruction, they're just. So, I think it should come to the, the full committee first, which would be the twentieth. Uh, for a, an approval, and then once that's done, then it will go to the select board, just to vote to approve the form of the contract, but the funds have been. Previously, that, there's enough funding from the bid results to support the project.
And I certainly don't want to, every, in a year's speed, stuff, or, but in past experience. Uh, they would typically want to have us make our move first, and then they would.
Yes, that's. I think my point is, I don't think we can go to them on the eighteen. Prior to the school committee, and I think the week after that.
I think the, the, the only thing I might propose is that we have a single agenda in. Maybe the seventeenth or eighteenth, and try to get to the select board a little sooner, but I think we can. Talk to this, maybe I'll contact the select board and see, I'll. Probably.
What is there, me?
I do meet every other Wednesday, I, you know, we meet starting.
The timeline, the concern all along has been the HVACs. They are. They were hearing it's at one point that HVAC units could be a six-monthly time. And. Uh. I think that. Their concern is getting into the holidays, if we don't have all the contracts signed and in place. By. Um, you think they were thinking November first, when we have a question, June first? But I think the further discussions went on, that the roof has to get done first before the ACUs, the HVACs can be permanent. They felt like July first is a safe. Time frame, so as long as they get the contracts in place. Everybody approved by. January first, they felt very safe that everything would arrive by July first. Reality is probably not even going to go up on the roof until August first. Or sometime late July or August, so, so they felt like we had enough time built in. Uh, so, to Henry's point, I, I think they'd really love to have Joe, December first, but we have that, we have, we do have a little buffer there.
Why, is it, is there scheduling for snap rule with the, the subcommittee, because why wouldn't we? Focus on November sixth?
What happened, well. The, uh, so RDA and Leftfield asked for more time to put a little more effort into the bid documents that they put out, and I think it was worth it, they felt like it was. We were within our timelines, there were some complexities that they wanted to figure out with the bid documents, and really. It, it's incredibly important to get those right, because once they come in, we can't then say like, oh, well, could you?
So are you waiting for this documents to come back before you make the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, we're, because we have two bids, so we have one for the liquid recover and one for the replacement.
We have, we have one bid out that is for a recover with a new membrane, with an alt. Add delete for a liquid apply.
So the recommendation to the school committee is continue to know what those bids come in at?
I would, I think it's. Probably multifaceted, I think, uh, we're still doing the pros and cons, we've been floating from the pros and cons, but I think that they need to digest the pros and cons along with the price delta.
When do the bids come back?
Uh, come back. Our bids are due on the thirteenth. Of November, of November, right, originally, they were going to be back this week.
This is it.
Yes, they're going to be back early next week, and we were going to try and, I think they were going to be back on the fifth, and we're trying to try and flip it for the sixth, and they said, okay, let's slow this down. We're feeling a little rushed, feel like the documents are not as complete as they could be. Uh, they, as Sammy said, they want to put out a complete, accurate package, and felt like there was the time that was booked.
Can you think part of, I have been part of all the meetings, or, said part of, part of discussions, making sure that they did the bid documents, that folks understood that it's, well, the ultimate, the credit, and they. Had the ability to save yourself, be, they don't know, like, and. Want to do them, well, that's kind of. Video, that's the issue, they got the language. Characterize it from what I understand, so that we don't get sort of in the mix that, like, all of a sudden, it's not, it's fast for some of the.
So given how this was apparently important period. On this familiar summer, um, I don't, I think that it should be something in a regularly scheduled business meeting versus one, personally versus one-off.
I think that works, I think if we can put it on the schedule for the twentieth, where it's still with, well within that time.
And I'm also gonna strongly suggest that you're gonna come. Present to us.
Yeah.
So if, if the school agrees on the twentieth, we vote.
No, it's Thanksgiving, so. It won't be till probably December third. I mean, unless they're willing to do, especially me, I.
I think we're probably still within our time, December third. You know, if they vote to approve. Um. Then we should be able to have contracts executed within a week of that. By all bodies, it's, should be good to go, you know, they, they're still, they're still ordering equipment before.
The only thing we could do, you said they'd do the fourteenth, the thirteenth of November?
Thirteen, thirteen of November.
In theory, we could have, maybe even an evening meeting on seventeen or eighteen. And then it looks, to me, I could be wrong, but that the nineteenth is a slow order meeting, that, that, I just think if we do, we need to do it at night. Not do like an afternoon, like I think it should be.
Yeah, that's my question, normally, so if it's been done, that doesn't be, uh. We need to gather the bigger representation, so we have that, well, we had the scope reviews, that's, that's really tight.
But you could meet this, you could meet on the fourteenth, is that?
So we, we have the fourteenth tag for. For our decision.
So at that point, I mean, so fourteenth to the twentieth, fourteenth to the.
Yeah, well, you're gonna miss a slot, I mean. That's my only point.
So why don't we leave it as, we'll tend to, we have it on the twentieth. And if there's a reason, right, to perhaps, you know, to line up after the county, and plus now, and well, as Jen said, we'll try to put together a quick meeting. I mean, we prefer not to do that. But if we have, but if we have.
I just think we want, we want to make sure to advertise properly, um, and I would think that if someone from the subcommittee. Subcommittee, big comment. Talk to them, present to us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there would be.
And we could do that the seventeenth or the eighteenth, and then. Clearing this with select board, then the nineteenth, they, they need, this could be wrapped up, so it's just a little.
I, I'd love to.
Because otherwise with Thanksgiving, it is, it's like, it's probably December third.
Yeah. I can check with Lena to find out, is December third too late?
Yeah. There's anything to go on.
Yeah, and just to, just to reiterate, what, what we're, the decision we're really making is, are we gonna use the liquid applied?
Is it low bid? That, so that point is okay, so we make that decision and then. It's low, low.
No, it's, it's low bid on. Recover with a new memory. However, we can consider low bid on the put of volume. As an alternative. So it's gonna be low bid either way, whether it's, but, but if liquid apply comes in less. If liquid apply comes in less, which is, it's proposed to do so, or as predicted, predicted to do so. But the recommendation is to go with a new membrane, don't have to take the low of liquid apply, but we do have to take the low of memory.
So once we decide what that it's going to be, it will be clear, I guess, based on the bids.
Correct.
So we are the fact of, we'd be voting.
And we, right, uh, at the, at the. Okay. You're within your right to take the recommendation of the subcommittee, and I'm not sure why we wouldn't. Got a lot of highly skilled, knowledgeable people on that committee. If they, when they, if they recommend something, you vote to accept that recommendation. Uh. Then, yeah, we'll try to just.
Then that will be presented select board through.
I think on the twentieth, when we present, you will have the option to vote on either. Contractor A could be doing a recover, contractor B could be doing, so there could be one of two different contractors on discussion on the twentieth. But it should be narrowed down to two, at a, at a, at a maximum. Right, at that point, it should be down to.
Anything else?
I've been finding.
All right. All right, um. Okay, we'll move on to approval of policy.
Uh, no, we actually need to, are we doing this at least?
Oh, I think more takes, I'm sorry.
Good.
Sorry.
Uh, we, yeah, so we had a policy subcommittee meeting. Last week, um, we're voting tonight on some of the policies that we were, we were reviewing there. And we'll hold our regularly scheduled monthly meeting in November and continue the MAS C revisions. Um, but in the meantime, we have a meeting next week, um, with some administrators, John and Julia. To look at the competency determination policy that is going to be committed before us. Um, and to look at our activity. Set the work there. And then my other, I'm on the superintendent's wellness advisory committee, and then we had our first meeting. All the weeks, um, and we're starting a review of the district's wellness policy, which is due for its. Every three year. I'm changing that.
Right, can you have her?
I actually have one more thing, and I don't, stop me if this doesn't fit into this category, but we did talk about. A liaison. Between. And John and the rest of administration was out with this, the liaison between our committee and the charter school, it's good work. Um, and so I did start some conversations there, um. And. Those are ongoing, I think the proposal that, of work together. You know, without approval, approval was obviously the subcommittee or the charter school, was meeting quarterly, just to catch up, I think. Um. There, there's some interesting points, we share a lot of students, whether they're in third grade, going to charter school, fourth grade, or whether they're coming to a high school. Um. There's, there's opportunities to collaborate. Uh. You know, make sure, you know. Maybe provide school tours for. Charter school students who are coming to the high school to make sure it's comfortable. Um. So I'm going to continue those conversations, I don't have any kind of proposal, I bet, but.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking, how, how do we make, so it sounds premature, but we may want to have this as a. Liaison position, right, like we do have other liaison positions.
Yes.
Maybe, but, so I guess I can look to your guidance around, if that does make sense, you know, obviously bring it in front of the committee. And we'll discuss it, um, the other thing I was a little worried about is you have, you run a lot of committees.
I, I probably would not take the liaison position, but I, I have sort of started having conversations, just because this was something that a community member brought to my attention. Uh. So. I'm happy to make introductions.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I, I, I think it's a great idea to liaison and network, um, and so. It would become, yeah, I, and I, you know, a lot of people may be interested, but I'd be very interested in being that liaison. But we're not there yet, but just when, when you're, you're ready to kind of have something that's a little more. Tangible, bring it before us.
I will, and I will, I, the head of school there, uh. Things, I lead John, and collaborates with him very well, so. Uh, I feel like there. There are, you, a good connection there, I just. You know, maybe, there may be opportunities for.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
Um, so the budget subcommittee that we met twice, um, is a subcommittee with the finance committee, just a liaison subcommittee. Um, and we've had some. Um. You know, pretty. Detailed discussions on how we're gonna. Be here this budget reporting, uh, I will say the finance committee has given a directive to the school committee, subcommittee, as well as the other departments. To be, um, preparing a level. Funded budget. Which means. At this point, there are no, uh, expectations for this new budget. Based on the revenue projections. Um. Could change, but, um, that's where we are right now, so we're, we're starting to work on that, and then we're going to actually meet just ourselves, it's something the next week. Leave the service. Good job, um. So we will probably start coming back to the school committee with some, um, preliminary stuff, more like in December, probably. And, uh, but I think we could probably get a timeline, I hope, um. That by the next meeting, chosen to win, we will be looking, uh, to vote, but we'll probably be looking at. Going through the budget process in January and February, it's voting, um, budget in February. Within, think of global in March, and then. Going to. Right, something.
When you say coming back, the committee. What are you? Thinking you're bringing it? Well, as initial things, we would generally, we would be working with the superintendent, superintendent and the head, and assistant superintendent will be presenting the budget.
This is generally about the speed, we could work, yes. Yes, we do the work in the subcommittee, and that disowed the, the committee, then Mike and I work on, on industries, anyway, subcommittee, then this full committee would be our. Post, that's one again, budget, then that goes through, discussionary else, thoughts, and then we'll do a public hearing. Bring it back, the public hearing, vote on the budget, and of course, stay here for the. So that, those are pretty set, so budget, public hearing budget, and a finance board, and then. Town meeting, and then, and then the, 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 the subcommittee meeting.
I'm familiar with the budget process, I think my question is more. About the role of the subcommittee, we as a. School committee, you know, we've heard a lot of comments about how cheap the facility here is going to be, but we as the school committee haven't. You know, had any. Discussions around. Jet, and what people are really wanting to see, we haven't had any content, so that's really. Who holds the different. In this stage, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think Jen's, uh, the company of the, of the, so far, it's pretty much discussed, we just, we really talked about, like, the detail that we're looking for, from Mike and I. To present the budget, and then how to get there, and we're just very much interested in the new town's projections, just getting with some. They did your last meeting, so. Okay, that's what I was saying. You know, you know, what we had, what you have. We're working, staying on the passion, and then.
Um, not much to report, but the Marblehead twenty thirty-seven. Um, not much to report, but the Marblehead twenty thirty seven comprehensive master plan had their first meetings. We'll see. So on the liaison to that, obviously. There's something to bring back to the studio. I'll let you know that the process, excuse me, the process is starting.
I just have one, uh, so when I was, when I was away, a few days I was away, uh, the town, my safety committee met, I see five, I wrote it for me, um. He breaks up here, so uh, it's really the. Principals, uh, speaking. Fire chief, police chief, SOO, generally to our school, charter school, myself, either topic or white. Um, and. So C school, maybe I was already, I'm sorry, hey, uh, well, I'll make sure you get an explanation with that. Uh, it was just ma- mainly just, uh, you know, we, we talk about safety stuff in general, we can't talk about specifics of this, in this role, but most things like. Get into their fire. Still there, um, you know, there, uh, struggles. Thing and then talk about any old things, like. I'll be to address, you know, things like. You know, camera replacements, uh, placement, getting covered in those kinds of things. And then really, I believe collaboration with, uh. It was fire, the power, the power, the same, the power, the environment. Position of support. That's, that's what. So I have, I think, uh. That happened. Uh, I think that's the same. Yeah, it's going to be. Schedule one of them. Although some great information and then. Well, as you talked about. Make, we just think of all of this.
All right. Um, our last discussion item. Is approval of policy provisions.
Um, did you want to do this tonight or do you want to take a month to next meeting to see more? Really, that's such a potential to. I'm fine with.
Um, to the committee? I'm sorry.
What was your comment about the second person? They don't have any one and there's. Except that the item.
There's still one other item.
Yes, I understand that's there's. I will. Um, so the first. Policy would be, uh, a motion to rescind. Policy CHCA dash E, approval of handbooks and directives. I make a motion to send policy CHCA dash E. That's true. Uh. And so motion by Kate, second by. Um, so NASC has recommended removing all from policy handbooks. It's unnecessary. Um. Their provisions, the policy details provisions that state law requires be in handbooks, but they're not required to be in district policy and it doesn't fully capture.
Any discussion? All right, um, all in favor? Motion passes five zero.
The next one is also a decision, so I will make a motion to rescind policy CL administrative reports.
Seconded by Al Williams.
Um, this is another one that NASC recommends removing, so necessary. With a motion by Kate.
Yeah, correct. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero.
All right, the next, um, it's revisions to. Policy DJ, which is purchasing policy. So I will make a motion to revise policy DJ purchasing. As set forth in. The revision such.
Second. Seconded.
Uh. So NASC put out a number of policy revisions in. September twenty twenty three related to purchasing and. Experiment policies. Um, this one, the editor to bring our policy into alignment with the NASC policy. Um, and that was John's recommendation after reviewing both our existing policy and. And first by Kate, second.
Yeah, any further, yes, any further discussion? So motion was made by Kate, seconded by Al. All in favor? Motion passes five zero.
So I will make another motion, a motion to revise policy DJ a's purchasing authority, um, as reflected. Uh.
Second by Melissa.
This is a pretty simple update, um, changing policy language to, um, to refer to Osp centers. Um, and then adding some language limiting the condition of.
Discussion. And motion by Kate, seconded by Melissa, all in favor? Motion passes five zero.
Okay, um, next I will make a motion to revise policy DJE procurement requirements. Seconded. Before Melissa. Um, so this is the, the most substantial revision that we're looking at tonight. Um, it reflects changes made to the agreement laws in twenty twenty two. Um, these revisions, they're the NASC suggested revisions and review of John and Mike. Um, and NAS, and. John and Mike have both requested that we need the edit that changes the threshold. Um, for procurement from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand because our district meets requirements of the law.
Okay, any discussion? All right, um, the motion made by Kate and seconded by Melissa, all in favor? Motion passes five zero.
Last one. Motion. Um, to revise policy JEB entrance H. Exactly. And so this is the policy that Al had brought to our attention, um, a couple meetings ago after hearing concerns from parents in the community that time. Each. Start kindergarten to first day of school rather than a specific calendar day, very uncertainty. And so this edit would change that date to be set September first, which is John's suggestion, and this is. Date in the NASC.
Any discussion? Okay, on the motion made by Kate, seconded by Melissa. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Is there any new business? Uh, we had one item, John, on your correspondence.
Oh.
I don't believe you addressed in your update.
No, I didn't. Uh, yeah, so. I mentioned, I mentioned briefly, um, just the. They will embarrass and, uh, shared. Uh, the information about snap benefits possibly being affected that, you know, because of the shutdown and everything. So. I just, again, I want to reiterate, she created this document in council or somewhere, uh, her. Housing peers, and I shared it out with our community at large. It's really just a way to make sure that our mom and dad families and everyone is helping. Um, the way they can with our donations, the food pantry, and she lists a bunch of resources. Um, that are available in the community for folks that may, uh, need some extra support. For instance, Margaret Food Pantry, Salem Pantry, it's lost public market. Uh, we have a free pantry, family table, that's a, that's a finite. And then additional green resources, making it meaningful, female, humane society, more at counseling center. So there's a lot of resources that I thought was great that, um, they. They didn't able to kind of put this forward, um, for me to share out with folks because, you know, just in general, um, there's, there's plenty of folks who need the extra support. And whether the snap benefits, you know, uh. Uh, stop or not, it's still always good to have an updated list. It's just really good information to share and want to stay. For to open Mary, Matt, Bill, Scott, Liz. And so it's. I still was the point about share out, talk more at the meeting tonight and just shed many love. There's a lot of good stuff behind it. Community, helping those who need help and support. Again, hard folks to, you know. See how they can help, you know, food grasp, PTA, these sales are doing a lot of great work and everything else too. So. Um, you know, we always talk about the strong holidays and that's always important. It's all always important to this year too. So. So much like, you know, veterans day, home crowd, we'll step to the deck. This is also. I have these applications that go.
All right, um. We're going, going to, I asked for a motion soon to go into executive session. I just want to let people know that. The statutory grievance will not be discussed tonight. We were asked to postpone it. And so we will do that and schedule it at a later date. So I'm looking for a motion and vote to meet the executive session for the following reason. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, thing three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marblehead School Committee and Marblehead Teachers Association, MUP dash twenty five dash one one five five five. As an open meeting, they have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so the motion was, uh, made by Kate, seconded by Henry. Uh, we will now, uh, I'm sorry, on. We need to vote, a roll call vote, Jen?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Melissa?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Al in favor? Okay, we are now in the executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marblehead School Committee and Marblehead Teachers Association, MUP dash twenty five dash one one five five five. As an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session.
Please Patrick.
Yes. Just. Good job, guys.